Call to order the October 3, 2023, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Good evening, Jean. Could you take attendance, please?
Pasaurus.
Here.
Sean Kevlin.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
Aton Goldberg.
Here.
Peter Boynton.
Hi.
Gemma Wilkins.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here in person and ready to go. Fantastic. All right, why don't we do, we're gonna jump around a little bit, why don't we do 189 Willow Street, Vincent Grasso. Jean, what's going on here?
So I reached out to the applicant again based on the board's comments last meeting. As you know, they had continued to tonight's meeting. Aton, you had suggested that potentially if they don't have any new information for tonight, that we would request a withdrawal without prejudice. I received an email today where they requested to continue one more time. So one more time, if you were to allow that, would continue until the October 17 meeting, but then not before conservation until October 25. So again, if you're willing to entertain it, it would really be for two more meetings with us because they need to hear from conservation ahead of planning.
When did this open?
April 25 of '23. And that was the only night it was heard. Stormwater peer review hasn't begun yet. Nothing's begun. They're really trying to get a sense from conservation. Their first sense, when they did go to conservation, wasn't really well received. And so from there, they've indicated they're trying to revise their plans. The email today did say he's talking to the applicant about potentially withdrawing without prejudice, but he just doesn't have that answer yet.
Well, let's say we don't grant their motion for a continuance.
Then you'd probably have to deny the application, I would think.
We could close the public hearing and we could vote on it and we could deny it. That doesn't prevent them from reapplying, correct?
Not if you do it without prejudice.
Correct. Okay. Anybody have any thoughts on whether we should, it's been since April. Here's my other, so here's my concern. One, they haven't provided anything. Two, what they've provided so far really is insufficient. Just, three, there's serious conservation issues. And four, even if they come back to us in two weeks saying they've been before Concom and now they have a new plan, it's not fair to the people that we've noticed in April, seven months later, to have, to expect them to be able to come back and be keeping track of this and things like that. So.
The one technical item is why they applied to planning was because they wanted to go to conservation. But you can't go to conservation unless all other applicable permitting requirements are applied for. So they essentially applied and then asked you to put that on hold until they get something from conservation. And it's just been whatever six months.
So what happens if we deny it? Can they not then go forward with their conservation application because we've denied it?
I didn't get a clear answer on that.
So why is it, is this a conservation rule?
Conservation, yes. So their regulations require all other permits to be applied for. Not necessarily a decision made on them, but to get before them, they have to at least have applied for every permit that is required for their application.
Can we renotice it without closing the?
We can require them to renotice. If you want to allow a continuance contingent on, the next time they're to be heard, it gets renoticed.
Let's support that.
I think that would be the clearest way.
We did that for Zero Turnpike Street, if you remember, because they also had continued for quite some time.
Okay, continue until when? Should we? I don't want to continue until the 17th. What's the point of that if they haven't been before conservation?
Right, so the next meeting in November would be the 7th.
Okay.
And that would give us sufficient time to renotice it.
So how about continue to November 7? And I think we would be uninclined, barring further information or evidence, to grant any further continuances. And if they do wish to continue to pursue the application, they will have to renotice.
Can we give a condition on when to renotice prior to a meeting, right?
I guess we'll have to figure that out because let's say they go before conservation and they're told, they come up with a new plan, but that new plan's not gonna be ready from the 3rd. I don't want them to notice for it. But before they present new evidence here, it's gonna have to be renotice before additional plans or evidence is presented here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but then I would suggest it gets continued to November 21st.
Well, I'd say I'd want it here for November 3. If they have, if they have no, nothing new or they're gonna withdraw it, then let's just kill it on November 3. If they've been to conservation and there's hope.
A path forward.
Then at least we know that. And then on the November 3, we order it renotice.
Okay.
For the next meeting. I think that's extraordinarily lenient because I think we could just deny it at this point. I think it's a good suggestion by John. Why don't we, that's how we'll go. Okay, so that is continued until November 3?
November 7.
November 7.
Yeah.
Sure, why don't we, so motion to continue the public hearing for 189 Willow Street till November 7, under the conditions that before they present any new evidence here, they will renotice the public hearing and that the board is unlikely to grant further continuances without, it's a good cause. So I'll make the motion, motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I pass this. Okay, let's go discussion item, 1450 Osgood Street. MAC, let's say, request for insubstantial change to allow for onsite bus stop area. That sounds controversial. All right. Challenge accepted.
So the LUPI decision authorized the development of approximately 3.8 million square foot warehouse and distribution facility leased to Amazon. And the building parking associated improvements are substantially complete. The applicant is requesting pursuant to condition number 122 of Lot B decision, approval of parking and related adjustments as a minor modification or an insubstantial change. Specifically, the applicant is seeking to convert an existing paved parking area into a new bus stop available for use by the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, now known as MEVA, as part of its route to provide bus service for the Amazon facility. Implementation of measures designed to encourage the use of public transportation was required in both the Community Benefits Agreement and under condition 100. C of the LUPI decision. The route and location have been reviewed by MEVA and they are in support of the proposed location on site as the existing stop on Osgood Street is not adequate to service this facility. The proposed location for the bus stop area is located on an existing paved area, so there'll be no changes to stormwater management. Minor revisions to curbing, striping, signage are required in addition to two new bus shelters. The applicant will explain the resulting impacts to the original parking space counts and explain their reasoning for adjusting those counts based on the updated calculations. And at some point today, I emailed you the letter from MEVA showing some support for the project, but also detail on some other information they wanted to convey to the board.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board for the record. John Smolak, Smolak and Vaughn representing Hillwood. With me today is our MAC Yudse, Vice President Development with Hillwood. Also with us is John Greeley, the New England Economic Development Lead for Amazon, as well as Hannah Scher with Lang and Engineering, should you have any questions of a technical nature. And so as noted by Jean, we're simply asking the board for approval of a site plan adjustment to an existing parking area to enable the creation of a bus stop on site, which was driven by a couple of things. First, the board's decision included a request for implementation of peer review recommendations, one of which was to work with Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, AMEVA, on bus accommodations and also the town's Community Benefits Agreement that was entered into by the town in Hillwood at Amazon, which encouraged the use of public transportation. So as a result of discussions that have transpired over the past, let's say, maybe eight months or so, we've come up with a proposed adjustment to the parking area on the site into that will accommodate a bus stop on site. Happy to take any questions or to have any further explanation on, in terms of the parking and the like you have MAC Yudse here, too.
So it looks like from the MEVA letter that there's some ongoing discussions about furthering the route, more than the, it seems like you can figure out where the bus stop's gonna be. Can you tell us any more about those kind of discussions about furthering the route?
Well, what I can do is speak to earlier discussions with MEVA before the new executive director came on board. And those discussions entailed the possibility of future changes in route based on ridership. And so since the facility hasn't opened yet, not opened fully yet, we don't know what those routes would look like currently. And I don't know if MAC has any further information on that or John Greeley at this point.
Yeah, John may have more information on what their plans are on that. Our focus has been primarily to figure out where we can accommodate them on site. I don't personally know that, you know, when they're, they plan to bring these new routes online and where exactly they might go if they're different from where they are today.
Jean, does this have any help or effect on our MBTA communities? Kind of, I know we're gonna talk about that a little bit later, but one of the things that we talked about is, and this is a potential location, is public transit service. So.
Yeah.
Does this, how does this interplay with that?
So it's a positive because then it would be a dedicated line from Ward Hill into downtown Haverhill. So it would loop through this parking lot and back to Haverhill, but it still provides a means of public transportation to the site itself. In fairness, MEVA had every intention of reestablishing the bus route here. So they had suspended it during construction, but there always had been a route that kind of pulled over. There was a bump out on Route 125 and that bump out is still there, but it doesn't have that separating island anymore. And so the location here does provide for better pedestrian access and safety throughout the parking lot. And I'll just add that MEVA letter did suggest a couple of conditions, that they haven't actually done any type of swap path with their bus to make sure it can navigate that turn and that loop. And they want to make sure that the pedestrian connectivity and safety is to both the sites, 1600 Osgood as well as 1450 Osgood.
What about the funding and the required match?
So that's something that they are pursuing within their budget. And so that's just, that grant requires that type of match. And those are the discussions that they're having with the Amazon staff. So I haven't been part of those discussions, but he detailed them in the memo.
Quick question, because it's unclear to me on the plan. Where does, where would the MEVA bus enter the site and exit the site?
So the suddenly entrance, which is obviously closest to North Andover, it would come in this darker grade drive aisle, come through this red box in a one-way fashion. So the one-way down, turn around, the shelters are on the far right, there's two shelters, and then exit the site with that same entrance drive aisle. So it's one-way circulation once you get in that red box. I can show it better on a little bit lower here. So that adds all the dimensions for curbing and the shelter and spaces. The drive aisles are 25 feet and you can see here the one-way markings.
So basically it's a conversion on existing paved area to the starter restriping for the bus stop and some additional accessory bus stop signage.
Okay. Where do things stand with, let's say this gets approved as an insubstantial change, where does things stand with the project?
We are working on final TCO now to, you know, for their sort of phase one initial launch in the next couple of weeks. The first phase opening is, will be here shortly. And so we're geared up. Soon as this, this plan's approved, we'll implement the few changes we need to make to get the work on this lot started.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Motion to approve the revision as an insubstantial change?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. That's up.
All right, so I'll draft a decision in the next few days. There's no appeal period, obviously, but I'll get to you.
Okay.
Let's do, all right, so the order we're gonna do next, we're gonna do MBTA Community Guidance Update, then we'll do 315 Turnpike, then we'll do Lake Chitwick Water Levels, then we'll do Meeting Minutes. Okay, so that.
All right, so.
MBTA Community Guidance Update.
Okay, all right, yep. So Ian Burns and Kayla Rennie are here from the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. They'll provide an overview of the August 2023 guidance update. I've included the summary of the changes in a redlined version in your packet. Ian's also gonna provide, Kayla was there as well, an update on the public meeting that was held September 13th for Garden MBTA Communities in North Andover.
Thank you to the board for having us here tonight. We just have three quick slides to share with you all. An update to some of the MBTA Communities, excuse me, guidance from the state and a quick summary of the public meeting we had a couple of weeks ago to solicit feedback from the public and from members of this board and the select board as well to give us some feedback on the proposed districts we've been working with Andrew and Jean on. So Ian Burns, again, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, joined by Kayla Rennie. We're in the Community and Economic Development Department there. So first slide here is a brief overview of one of the changes the state made to the regulation. This has to do with mixed use. So previously, the state had said in its regulations that you could not require mixed use, although you could allow mixed use. And that essentially came from a concern that if you require mixed use, it could make it economically infeasible for a developer to put in housing if they can't make the budget work with commercial space in the development. They have revised those guidelines to allow you to require a certain amount of mixed use in a district. Essentially, what it's saying is that 25% of that zoning unit capacity that's in your requirements can be put in a mandatory mixed use district. However, it is mostly intended for communities that already have some pretty active mixed use neighborhoods, where if you were to change the current zoning there to allow non-mixed use, it would severely harm the downtown area or the area that you're zoning over. So when taking a look at it, really the state was intending to protect pre-existing mixed use neighborhoods and not to incentivize the creation of new mixed use neighborhoods, if you follow what I'm saying. And so our interpretation, after talking with Andrew and Jean and talking with actually other communities across the region, is it doesn't seem like it's very applicable, this change to North Andover, as well as several of your neighboring communities, as a lot of it is intended to help downtown areas and neighborhood cores near transit already that have some pretty substantial walkable areas. And so in our region, for example, we see that as maybe being like downtown Newburyport or maybe downtown Haverhill. But that was our interpretation and that's the first change that the state has made to the regulations. Questions about that before I go to the next?
So that's only as, if you're making it mandatory. You could still, we had been talking about allowing mixed use and providing bonuses or benefits if you do make it mixed use, but not requiring it.
Correct.
If we have that, it doesn't change.
You can still incentivize the mixed use. It's just if you require it, you have to show that you had some sort of reason for requiring it.
Okay, fair enough.
And requiring it is?
If you did require it, you said it was 25%?
Yep, so if you were requiring it, then the district where you have the mixed use could only accommodate up to 25% of that unit capacity that you're required to zone for, correct?
So if we have to have 1,100 units, you can only do 250 of them in the place where you're requiring mixed use?
Correct, yep.
Up to.
And even then, the mixed use has to be allowed on the first floor. And the mixed use, the commercial use can't require any additional parking for whatever the commercial space is on the first floor of the mixed use area. So.
Is this regulation kind of intrinsically related to what we're gonna talk about, about the new district? Or is it just side by side? I mean.
In terms of the districts you've been talking about?
It may be a different way of asking, is this a subset of this new thing or is it sort of distinct from it?
If you were considering an area where you wanted to make sure mixed use was mandatory, then it would consider that. As of right now, the districts we're considering, we don't see it as fitting for those two districts, looking at Market Basket and out on Osgood Landing. That wouldn't be a fit for these at this time.
The way I see it, John, is basically the state came up with this law that says you have to have housing. And different areas are, people are complaining about different parts of it. So they're amending the regulations in parts of it to become, to kind of cater to different groups. So that's what this is. This is basically, some people said, hey, we can only do this and we want to have the mixed use, but it only makes sense in our downtown. And that's where, so can you help us out by being a little, giving us a little bit more? And so that's what I think they're doing.
Is this law or a regulation?
It's a regulation. And so this is a state regulation. So the statute authorized having the law is mandating multifamily zoning in the community. This is part of the regulation of the administration's interpretation of that statute. And so this is the change. And I think I would just add to what Aton was saying where it's thinking about communities, especially things like Brookline close to Boston, where if you change some of their neighborhood center zoning districts, you could create a situation where a developer buys a building, kicks out the small business and turns it into housing because you're no longer mandating that first floor be mixed use. And that was a potential under the previous regulations. So they want to prevent essentially developers from being able to get rid of businesses in mixed use areas. And then the one other change, we had known that this was a possibility for a little while, but essentially the initial statute outlined three grants that communities would be disqualified from if they did not comply. And so those three grants are the second bullet, their Mass Works, Housing Choice, and Wolf of Capital Projects Fund. In addition, the states that they would take compliance into account when they were considering other grant programs. So they've essentially now said what those grant programs are and they have said that you won't necessarily be ineligible for the grants, but it will put you at a less competitive advantage compared to other communities that are compliant. So think about the grant applications when communities are being scored. North Andover won't get the points for being compliant if you are not compliant for those grant programs.
I just wanted to mention briefly some of the updates we have from the public engagement session that we conducted on September 19. Overall, it went really well. We had some great attendance, thank you to those who were able to attend. We had some great questions and feedback. People were able to learn about these districts and express their concerns. We had some questions, as some of you may have expected, about why we're not choosing to zone over the downtown. I think that was answered pretty well from us, as well as your town staff, as to why we're not looking at downtown. I think that's something that you will be revisiting at a later date. But there were some questions about that, so we wanted to just mention that briefly. There were also some questions about how the state regulations maybe didn't take into consideration some of these towns, such as yourself, that have been building a lot of housing recently. Something to just note very quickly, a lot of the concern is, you know, with some of this recent development, the numbers are based on the 2020 census. So it was actually addressed during this meeting that if we had actually taken into consideration all of the very new development that you've done, there would actually be even more of a unit requirement for you guys. So I think that was addressed pretty well. We also had some questions about Royal Crest as well had come up, about why that was not an area we had looked at. Believe that was also addressed very well. Obviously, there had been some strong opposition to that in the past. So we still feel very confident that these districts were, I think, accepted and people seemed interested to look more into it and learn more about it. Again, the video is available online if people want to look at as well. We're looking forward to continuing these discussions with the public and learning more from them.
And as expected, you know, when we talk about zoning changes, there was a lot of concerns and I think some anxiety around it. The takeaway, too, for us after we talked about it was nobody in the audience had an idea for a different district than what we've considered so far. That was all that we had for you all to show, give you a quick update. Any questions about those three areas?
Jean, any comments on the public session?
Not in addition to what they just offered. I do want to discuss next steps. So I thought on next steps, whereas we've talked about this plug and play motto for different dimensional criteria, that's actually gonna set the units per acre in zoning. And so what I think would be helpful for the next update is to kind of hone in on those dimensional requirements and look at what exists today. Like, I believe Market Basket is B4, which allows 45 feet in height already. And just kind of talk about what parameters might be acceptable in these two areas so that we can start, again, the next step is putting words on paper, right? And starting to build out the bylaw, but that dimensional piece is gonna drive a lot of it.
Can, when we look at, when you look at the, what's there already, can you not only present us with what's it's zoned for? What's actually built?
Yep.
On the parcels? And then what's built and allowed in the surrounding parcels? So like Market Basket, it's built, but it's all low, but what's it zoned for? And then the neighbor, you know, right across the street, there are already, you know, there's the park and then there are apartments and things like that. So what is actually in those neighborhoods and in surrounding where we're talking about? So that we have a sense of, okay, if it's already zoned for 45, is that appropriate to keep? Is it appropriate to raise? Should we make it lower based on what's allowed? But also frankly, what's actually there?
And surrounding, yeah. And we talked a lot about Market Basket. So that development across the street is at a much higher elevation that you don't even see from the road. Waverly Road is the one neighborhood that abuts Market Basket, but that elevation of Waverly Road actually sits much higher. And so a four-story building, to them, they're probably seeing the top two stories.
So that kind of context is important though for, I think, for our, when we're putting things to paper.
I just wanted to quickly ask, so this list of grants, I noticed on the Green Communities Grant Application, they had included a consideration of compliance with this as well, which is not on this list. So, you know, how many other grants are sort of voluntarily having this as a criteria? Might be interesting to find out just in terms of the impact.
Right, yeah. So the state has said that in addition to everything they're explicitly calling out, that they may consider your compliance in determining other grant awards. Anything that may be able to feasibly have to do with housing, which in Massachusetts right now, pretty much everything is connecting to housing. And so I would be concerned that there would be many more grants that you would lose access to if the town is not compliant. And we've been saying that in all the communities we've been working with, that there's probably many other areas of funding that the community could lose access to or be less competitive for, including Green Communities. It's a great, great catch.
I mean, it's interesting because I'm surprised and pleased that they were specific about it. I mean, a year ago when we were talking about this, I said this is what would happen, that they won't necessarily say you can't get these grants, but when you apply, you know, they'll look at it and it's this town versus this town and who's in compliance with the law and this town will get a heads up. I'm glad they actually came out and said it rather than it being this thing that just happens, but.
And that again goes back to that question about statute versus regulation. The statute only specifies those three grant programs as being ineligible. So I believe that's why the administration couldn't say you're ineligible for these grants, but you may just be less competitive.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Continued public hearing, 315 Turnpike Street, Gray Star Development East LLC. Application for limited site plan review under Article 8, Part 3 Site Plan Review and Article 10 Administration, Section 195, 10.7 of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. Application proposes construction on Merrimack College campus of a 77,600 square foot building situated along Turnpike Street and 62,000 square foot building situated along Andover Street. Both buildings are comprised of academic and residential space for college use. The site is located in the residential three zoning district. So what I think we'll do today is we'll hear from Jean first about where things are in the process, then we'll hear from the applicant, then we've gotten some public comments that have come in via email or mail that are in our packet that we'll talk about, and then we'll take public comment for the meeting. The reason I'm doing the ones that have come in already is because maybe they asked something that someone here might want to ask, or may want to follow up on, and it's easier to do that and go to the people here than vice versa, where then we might be caught, you might be coming back up. So everyone, and if anyone's here and they want to have a comment, we'll definitely get to them today. Okay, so that's the process. Jean?
Right, so as you know, the public hearing opened at our last meeting for limited site plan review. The staff report includes the eight reasonable regulations that the board does have the ability to include for your review. The applicant has filed with the zoning board of appeals for a height variance. As a reminder, that the planning board shall file a decision with the town clerk within 90 days of the application date, so that brings you to November 15th. The applicant has responded to the first peer review letter, an updated stormwater management report, an updated operations and maintenance plan, and a revised plan set that incorporates the response comments are included in the meeting packet. The stormwater peer review came back fairly clean, so I would anticipate by the next meeting that might get closed out. In response to questions asked at the last meeting, an email received from a resident at the last meeting, and an email received by the resident, I've asked the applicant's engineer to provide a detailed description of the downstream drainage flow, which is described as a closed drainage system, outfall into an existing intermittent stream. I've asked the town engineer, so in the stormwater peer review, there was a comment related to the material used for piping. Our stormwater bylaw specifies concrete, and the applicants have suggested two different types of material. John Burjazi had no objection to providing flexibility of utilizing both HDPE and RCP pipe, depending on the collection structures. And so that, like I said, the stormwater review came back pretty clean, and John has responded to his one comment.
All right, so are we going to, they're going to, someone's going to address the drainage issue?
No concern.
Today, okay. And so when you go to talk about that, let me know, because then we'll, we might as well read that email, and at that point, if you're already going to address it, rather than let's do that all at the same time. Okay? All right. Thanks, Jean.
Thank you for allowing us to come back. Jeff Doggett, Executive Vice President, CFO at Merrimack College and resident 84 Johnson Street. I will be very brief. I'm going to let the rest of the team introduce themselves. There are just a couple of points I want to raise, just sort of homework assignments coming back. The first is, as I said in the previous meeting, we would set up and then send out notice to abutters about several community meetings, the one in Berkeley Road, they should be receiving their mail, if not today, then tomorrow morning. That'll be for the 11th of October, and then we'll go from there if we need more, or not. But I wanted to let the board know that. The second is, is that we will discuss some part of stormwater today, especially there's a map that will describe some of the off-campus areas that are collected into our detention system. As it relates to the questions that came up about the residents in Andover, my understanding is, and I know some of them are here and they'll probably speak to this, but my understanding is there's a conversation with the town in Andover on Thursday, and my expectation is, is that whatever information comes out of that, we're all going to corral back together. And so the meeting, this meeting on the 17th, I would expect there to be a more detailed understanding of everything goes down. I just want to get ahead of that now, because I don't want you to go through the whole deck looking for that one answer, knowing that I'd prefer, and we would prefer as the college, that the town have that set of conversations first, the residents of Andover have an opportunity to weigh in there, and then we'll cycle back and bring it all back here. Yes?
Are you part of that conversation with the town of Andover?
I'm not. Nope.
I mean, is the college part of it?
No. No.
So the residents, who had raised a concern and some others, are going to be meeting with the town of Andover this week?
That's my understanding.
Your understanding. And then you'll talk with them, or the town of Andover, and then come, someone will come back, report to us at our next meeting about where things stand.
Just so we're clear, because I always like to be transparent, my, what I have, what I have stated to one of the gentlemen who spoke from this podium two weeks ago is, is that as we're pulling information together, I will sit down with he and whoever he wants to see what we would present here, in case there are any questions or inconsistencies. I'd like to know that well in advance of doing it in front of all of you.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Kristina Adet, who's our partner at Gray Star, partly because she knows all the players in the room, and I only know some of them, like our friends at VHB. So I'm going to hand it off to her. She'll briefly explain a little about the Gray Star part, because I know that was one of the board members' questions, and then we'll kick it off and go from there. Okay? Thanks.
As Jeff mentioned, my name is Kristi Adet. I work at Gray Star. I wanted to give a quick intro to the company as the co-applicant on this project, for those not familiar. Gray Star is a global real estate firm. We have in-house development, construction, property management, asset management, investments, really the whole gamut of real estate services. A big part of our business is what we call university partnerships. So we work with colleges throughout the United States on any sort of student housing needs that they have and how to best fulfill those. We've developed just under 50,000 beds across the U.S. to date. That being said, we do run really regionally, so I'm based locally out of the Boston office, and we'll be working with Jeff and the rest of the project team on placemaking programming and all steps of the process through different financing options, construction, development, and any pieces of property management that the college would like us to help them with. Yes.
Mind if I ask if you've done any projects with the last, recent years with other colleges in the area?
Yes, the most recent that our team has done is with UMass Dartmouth. It was a little over 1,000 beds, I believe, at their campus. That was our most recent. We've also done projects at Cornell, Howard University, Lehigh, among a handful of others in the area.
Thanks.
Thanks. No other questions, I'll hand it over to Jeff to walk through site plan. Thanks.
Good evening. Jeff Keteritz from VHB. If we want to do a quick team intro, is that, is that appropriate, just to let you guys know who we have here? Okay, great. Jean, you mind flipping to the next slide? Okay, great. So Jeff and Kristi have introduced themselves as well. Cube Three is the architect. We have Tom and Brian here. VHB for the civil engineers, myself and Chris Lovett. Eric Bennerick is our landscape architect, and Matt Keely, our traffic engineer. We also have Mark Johnson from Johnson &amp; Borstein's from legal counsel, and part of the team, but not with us tonight. Geoengineers is our geotechnical and environmental engineer. So sure you guys are well familiar with the site, but just want to give a quick context slide on the project location, tacking on to Jeff's presentation at the last meeting. So we're situated on the north corner of the Merrimack College campus, the area between the existing collegiate church and Andover Street and Route 114 to the east. The town line, you can see in the dash line, cutting across for the North Andover, Andover Division, so the project is located entirely on the North Andover portion of the site. Currently, the area is predominantly landscaped, some existing trees, topography slopes generally from plan right to left here, down to Andover Street as the low side. There's an existing Medina Drive that circulates around the Austin Hall and the collegiate church. That's a one-way drive going counterclockwise. Currently has some angled head-in parking off of that drive, which folks use to circulate out of the college primarily. There's an existing path that cuts diagonally across. You can see the center circle in the middle is a statue of Christ the Teacher that will be maintained and is certainly a focal part of this project. The path connecting it, kind of a narrow, fairly steep paver path, that's not really accessible at the moment. But the site is bounded by Massachusetts DOT State Highway, both Andover Street up to the town line, as well as Route 114 around the north and east corners there. So here's the proposed site plan. Two proposed buildings, Building One that aligns Route 114, and Building Two is the L-shaped one on the bottom left, fronting along Andover Street. The thin black line is the 30-foot structure offset from the property line, and a couple highlights on the proposed building setbacks, 32 to 35 feet from that parcel. The vehicular areas, so an important part of the project, is a reconfiguration of Medina Drive. We'll speak to the parking later on, but the one-way angled parking is being removed as part of this project to turn Medina Drive into a two-way campus circulation drive, pulling the parking off of that main circulation drive, and instead creating a drop-off zone with two accessible locations at the front and back ends of it, but well as, as well as some additional space in between for campus shuttles, temporary drop-offs as well. The pedestrian areas are the ones highlighted in, so I'll call that yellow or beige here. So primarily sidewalks, establishing new connections to the collegiate church at the bottom right, with a direct path out to the intersection of 114, to create a new accessible connection there, tying to what's shown on the permit plans is the existing concrete sidewalk along the DOT highway, but we'll get to some context, understanding the corridor improvement projects later as well. So I think we can hop down. So just tacking on to Jean's summary, as far as the proposed zoning, all in compliance, we are going back to the, not back to, we will be appearing before the zoning board for relief on the building height, and that is the October 10th, next week meeting. Utilities and infrastructure, this is just.
Let's go back to one thing on the prior page. When you did the lot area, is that the total lot area of the entire campus?
That should be the North Andover portion of it. That does not include the parcels in Andover.
Okay, but it's the entire campus in North Andover?
Yeah, correct. Correct. I believe it's two or three individual parcels.
Can you go back to that? I apologize for not getting this, but the column labeled with the word "provided," can you just help me understand that?
That is the, that's the current slash proposed condition, so that is the 2.4 million square feet is the.
With respect to the height?
Oh, to the height.
That's what's in the plan.
That is the proposed, that is the proposed building height.
I should interpret the word "provided" as "proposed"?
Correct. Correct.
Is there a reason you use the word "provided"?
We can clarify that.
I'm just curious.
It's a combination of some existing features, minimum lot area, but that the 48 feet is our proposed building height of this project.
I assumed it was what's provided for in the plan.
Yeah, I was just struggling.
They're engineers, not, you know.
Going into utility infrastructure, so this is a.
Engineer, and I'm still struggling, so.
With the language?
It's a, it's a today.
So each of the proposed utilities are colored here. I'll just do a quick run-through of each. As you mentioned, this has been reviewed with DPW, and no additional comments back from them. Sanitary sewer is the orange, that's intended to collect sewer services from the building and run kind of planned southwest below Building Two to tie into the existing 15-inch main in Andover Street. Based on the bed counts and the ground floor academic space, it's about 36,000 gallons per day of sewer generation. And again, with consultation in DPW, we understand there's no capacity concerns with that added flow. Water distribution, similarly, closer to about a 40,000 gallons per day estimated demand, just based on consumptive uses marked up from the sewer. Water distribution, we would be tapping off of the existing Merrimack College campus infrastructure. It's a 10-inch water main loop that ties to both Andover Street and back to 114, with domestic water and fire protection services to the buildings.
So what are calculations? Have you provided all your calculations to us?
Yes.
Jean, who has that?
It's in the application.
Okay.
Which gets circulated to DPW. And we did have a TRC, and Tim will let, and John Burjazi have both submitted comments saying they don't have any questions or concerns.
I assume it's just based on you have X number of units with X number of bathrooms, and it's used as a dorm.
Correct. It's a Massachusetts state code based on rates, so it's either beds for the residential portions of the program, and then in addition, there's a separate rate for the academic space on the ground floor.
And the water is 39,000 gallon per day increase from current?
Correct. Correct.
What percentage increase from current is that?
As far as current use from the college, that I would have to look into and get back to you on.
Thank you.
Okay.
How many beds are on the college now? And how many is this?
And this is, this is five, yep.
Not all of them, you can get to the whole campus, but I guess by way of difference, the majority of the beds are actually in Andover.
Well, one question related to that, do you literally, where the town line is drawn, all the water and sewer that physically sits in Andover is drawn from Andover, and everything that physically sits in North Andover is in North Andover? And what do you do if something's partly in one and partly in the other?
Great question. Not entirely. Previously, a good amount of the campus water system was fed all through the Andover system. In recent projects over the last five to 10 years, as they've been done, like the north campus dorms, and we're starting to move that over to the North Andover system if the building is located in there. We can certainly follow up with a map outlining that. It's, the intent has been to try to best align water sewer services with the buildings that they're in. Historically, it wasn't that way, so it's not completely, it's not a fine line now, but we can certainly outline that.
So it's safe to assume that everything that we're looking at for these buildings, the tie-ins, the water is going to be from North Andover side?
Correct. Correct.
So I think to refine my question would be, what percentage increase is the 39,000 gallon per day over the existing amount of water being provided to the campus from North Andover?
Just, again, for clarity, and I'm not sure how important this is or not, but when we say the campus, does that include the engineering building across the street? Right? Are we talking about everything that Merrimack owns, or literally on this parcel, or in North Andover on this side of the street?
I think it might be kind of moot. I don't imagine those engineering buildings are consuming anything near the residential ones.
I really have no idea. I'm just, I know we asked them to get information, and I just like to be clear when we tell them what we want.
So just have a quick question on the water consumption. So is that inclusive or exclusive of irrigation for the parcel?
That is generally exclusive. What the water demand is typically estimated on is based on a markup of the sanitary sewer generation.
Is there currently irrigation on that?
There is not. I don't believe so.
No, I was just saying, there's a pretty large, are you anticipating to put in irrigation, I guess?
We would, if so, I believe it would be, yeah. Limited, yep.
So I think it's a question really.
It's a good point, because that's often a big part of the draw.
Yeah.
So is this water, are we really concerned? So is this water, are we really concerned, the residential buildings, I mean, I assume the academics, there's not a lot of water use.
I'd like to just say for the campus.
Okay, so for everything?
For the campus, provided by north Andover, what percentage increase? I mean, I assume it's not hard to know what you're currently drawing.
Yeah, we'll dig into the water meter readings and pull that, yep.
So just, sorry, this is, maybe I put on my engineer hat on. So can you explain to me why it's not one-to-one for sanitary sewer to water? I'm just curious.
It's really for kind of consumptive uses. So not, not all of what you're taking in from the water meter ends up in your sanitary sewer, whether it's drinking.
Wouldn't that be the other way around, though?
Consumption.
Right?
The water would be a little higher just because not, not all of it makes it, makes it full cycle back into the sewer from what you're drawing in.
Okay, okay, yeah. So a little confused, but that's fine.
Yeah, because like when we get our water and sewer bill, it's, the volume's the same.
Right, yeah.
Not always. I mean, usually, I think there's usually a small difference.
Yeah, but.
And, I'm sorry, and I should say, this isn't really specific to billing purposes. This is more an engineering standard for estimating what the capacity is going to be impacted. So there's certainly peaks that are built into this. This is, this is not what the actual readings will be.
Yeah, I guess where I'm kind of double-clicking on is that I'm actually shocked that the water consumption isn't higher than the sewer consumption.
The water should be higher.
Water.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was reading this, sorry. Yeah. I've been looking at too many numbers.
Some people are drinking some water and some people are.
Maybe not, yeah.
Some of the partygoers aren't making it back to the bathroom. All right.
All right, yeah. Electric telecommunications, these are the red lines. The intent is to, obviously, we'll coordinate with the utility providers and begin that process, but the intent is to pull off of the existing overhead power along Andover Street. All the new infrastructure would be below-grade duckbanks, manholes from that pole location that would serve both the buildings. And a part of that telecommunications would incorporate the college's fiber network as well to connect from internal points in the campus.
What do you do with that below-grade infrastructure, electric and telecommunications for resilience when there's extraordinary, on a common basis, rain and flood and snow conditions?
Very, very applicable question. Redundancy is probably the best thing. Having backup sources, fail safes.
Does all the below-grade just, is it lost? So you're not able to protect it from extreme events?
I think the above-grade is more at risk, more the.
Perhaps to wind, but what about flooding?
So there's waterproofing measures, you know, particularly at building connections, link seals or conduit sealants that, those systems do get wet and fill up with water. You know, the cabling is protected. Often, it comes down to making sure that water doesn't make its way into the buildings. So there's methods of sealing the manholes if we're worried about intrusion there.
Is that part of the plan?
To be honest, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but but it will, it will be evaluated for sure. And maybe just to speak to some more redundancy from a backup power, the intent is to provide gas service to emergency generators located in those kind of two gray shaded utility yard areas. So each building would have a gas-powered emergency generator for backup power in the event of outages.
Is the main power source, it's going to be on electric building?
Yes, electric is the main power, yes. And then lastly, stormwater management is the green here. So a proposed closed drainage system, making sure we're capturing runoff at low points and probably predominantly want to highlight those three green boxes there. Those are the locations of proposed subsurface stormwater management systems. So those are below-grade tanks with an open bottom that allows the water to be held and gradually infiltrate into the ground, and then we slowly release it into the overflow drainage system, which ultimately is collected. The drainage generally runs kind of planned northeast through the corridor, wraps around Building Two into Andover Street, and we're proposing a connection into the MassDOT existing drainage system, just on the west side of Andover Street.
Does that head down towards Shawshank?
Eventually, yes. It runs, it runs in a below-grade pipe diagonally and probably another 100 feet off the page here, and then discharges at a head wall to a wetland system. So it's a combination of open streams and closed culverts eventually down to the Shawshank, yes. Just some highlights on stormwater management. Speaking to the corner projects here, the project does comply with Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, the MassDEP regulations, as well as the most recent local bylaws adopted as of last year. The project does reduce peak runoff rates and runoff volumes from existing to proposed conditions. That's for the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storm. We do also meet the water quality and exceed the water quality treatment requirements of 90% suspended solids removal and greater than 60% phosphorus removal. And that's done through a combination of some structural pre-treatment units and supplemented by the infiltration that we're getting out of those subsurface systems. Primary element here is that we are, our goal is to maintain the existing watersheds and drainage patterns. So we're trying to avoid moving water from ending up in one location to another. And as Jean mentioned, the stormwater peer review is underway with Horsley-Witten. So hoping to come back and follow up on that. And as Jeff said, I know Jeff had given a primer on this speaking to the campus-wide drainage system, and we'll certainly plan to come to the next hearing and probably speak in a little more detail, as Jeff mentioned on that. But I think what I'd like to just highlight on this plan, so Jeff mentioned the stormwater master plan that was put in place for the college back in 1999, 2000 or so, created two significant detention basins, one, the Elm Street Basin to the left, which is a darker red, and the football field basin, which are the yellow hatches to the right. So the area encompassed by that stormwater master plan is the red and yellow watershed boundaries. The area we are looking at is actually the pink, and it's the one portion of the main campus that is outside of the watershed of that master plan. So this project site we're looking at is not tributary to the areas that are included in that basin. So we've essentially just wanted to highlight that on a map, and would certainly like to come back and probably speak in a little more depth on big-picture drainage items. But for now, I'll try to keep it to the, to the pink, the project site.
So I want to read the email that we got about drainage, and then Jeff, you can tell me which of these questions you can answer now or which need to be answered at a later date. Either, either Jeff. Yeah, any, if there are any other Jeffs in the room that want to jump in, that's okay too. All right, this is from John Strauss. He asks, he talks about the plan and asks the following questions. Does the town typically allow private-site drainage to tie into a public drainage system?
I've confirmed with John Budjazey, it's commonplace throughout town.
Okay, so I was going to say, yes, that happens, that seems to happen a lot. If so, has a downstream drainage capacity analysis been performed?
So our analysis has been performed basically just relative to the project limits of this site at this moment, looking at anything further downstream from the head wall, which is shown right about at the town line. We have not gone further into that. I'm expecting that's going to be part of the following conversation.
Okay. Are there any existing drainage easements in place for the portion of the existing drainage system on Andover Street that encroaches on the Merrimack property shown as Map 24 Lot 29?
So none on the Merrimack property. I think I would probably just highlight the easement that is in place is a, is on the west side of Andover Street where we're tying in and just downstream of there, a MassDOT easement from that property of order. But nothing on the Merrimack property that we're aware of.
All right, I'll keep going.
So this is, this is a zoom-in of that pink area, and this is essentially the watershed that encompasses our project site. What's here is the existing conditions, and I'll probably kind of keep this high level for now. But generally, want to highlight, the blue is the Merrimack College property that's in the watershed we're looking at. The red is the existing roadway, Andover Street, that contributes to all that water that eventually flows to where the red circle is there as a closed pipe. And that heads diagonally down and right where Jean's cursor is there is the discharge into the wetland resource areas in the town of Andover. And then Jean, maybe to the next slide, I'll speak to the table there. So really, what we want to highlight is where this is outside of the stormwater master plan, we're not utilizing any bank credits. We're looking at this as a standalone project and demonstrating that from the existing to proposed conditions, we're reducing stormwater runoff primarily through the use of those subsurface systems. So the table here is just a quick example for the 25-year storm. Currently, the water flowing to that design point one where the red circle is, is about 40 CFS, and our project will be reducing that by about 4 CFS down to 36.
How do you know what it is right now?
Modeling. So we trace the watershed, and we do an analysis based on cover type, rainfall intensities, and we're able to calculate what that peak rate of runoff is in a typical 24-hour storm. And then we'll put those same inputs based on what the proposed cover types are. Because certainly by adding pavement, that's less water that naturally gets into the ground. So we're modeling that impact, and then we use that to design our subsurface systems and size them appropriately so that we're essentially recreating what's happening now.
Jeff, is that a typical way of measuring this? Or does, or do people ever, I don't know, I'm not, this isn't rhetorical, I don't know the answer to this. Do people ever go out and like look at, okay, it's supposed to flow like this, and we're supposed to get 40, but there are actually barrels that are kept here, and, you know, students keeps this here, and this building is actually, wasn't designed exactly as it is on the model, so things are actually either flowing less or flowing like. It's cool, these models are really interesting, but, you know, the people in Andover are like, well, Mike, you're getting flooded. So like, I'm just wondering if people actually go out at any point to actually look and check to see if this model is actually accurate to what's happening literally on the ground, but also figuratively on the ground.
So this is probably more on the campus-wide piece, but they do have, they've had a robust monitoring program where we have a few locations at the outlets of those detention basins where the college has been monitoring the flows and taking readings. Those are supplemented with a rain gauge there that can try to correlate it to one of these design storms. So we have been collecting that data probably for 10, eight or 10 years now and comparing it to the master plan, which the readings have all been consistent. You know, it comes down to getting a storm event that lines up with the, you know, the typical two-year, 10-year, 25. But it is, yes, there are monitoring programs that are in place and can be used to check that.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the slide showing the subsurface containment areas?
This one?
More the utility.
And are all, the green is the subsurface containment?
Correct.
Are they all existing, or are some of them proposed to be new?
Those are all new. Everything in color is new.
And are there other subsurface containment that exist and are not shown on this?
Not on this site. There is the very limited existing drainage infrastructure that's primarily down by the main entrance, just south of Building Two, but certainly no existing storage.
So are the two further to the south and east, are those uphill of the site?
The.
Let's take the one furthest to the east.
Okay, yep. That's on more of the uphill portion, yeah.
So what will that collect if it's on the uphill side of the site?
So primarily roof runoff from Building One as well as the utility yard area, yeah, to the right there.
I see.
So the locations were based on, there's a fairly high groundwater table, and those locations are kind of keyed into where we can get the most out of that depth of storage in the soil.
Because of the high water table, are they typically just full anyway?
There's, so there's a minimum vertical separation to the seasonal high level of that groundwater table. So part of the requirements is they need to drain out in 72 hours, and we've done some soil investigations to analyze what those infiltration rates would be and have to size them so that they can't stay full longer than that.
What's the correlation? I mean, when I looked the first time around at those three green blocks, I thought, oh, wow, that looks pretty big. But I have no idea. And how does that correlate to the amount of impermeable space you're adding on this site?
That's a, I think about this. It's kind of a dynamic response.
Well, it's going to depend on how big the rain event is, right? But you're adding so many square feet of impermeable space, and that would directly relate to a volume of water needing to be stored, which would vary depending on the severity of the rainfall.
More or less, yeah, yes.
Right, so how does that correlate? I mean, it can, it can handle a once-in-a-year rain event, it can handle a once-in-a-25-year, or, by the way, how would you rate the seven inches of rain in one-day event? That's a, how often in how many-year event?
That was close to a 100-year storm.
Okay, so can you help me with this question now? I'm sorry, I've inadvertently expressed it.
I see where you're going. So typical standard is these closed systems are designed for the 25-year storm.
And is that the way these are designed?
Yes, yes.
So in a 25-year storm, which is similar to the storm we had with seven inches in one day, these three tanks will not be overwhelmed?
They'll be at capacity. I should say that we still look at the 100-year storm, especially given what's happened now. So while we. So, while we, while these systems aren't designed to handle it, and mostly it's because the collection pipes, both upstream land or downstream of it can't handle, or weren't sized for that anyways.
Yep.
We still wanna make sure we're looking at the 100-year storm, so we can still model that and see where the ponding would occur, and try to keep that localized, you know, in low points within this site, away from buildings at the same time, but we have still run the 100-year storm event to understand where that minimal ponding flooding would occur, but it would exceed the closed drainage system.
Thanks. Thanks for coming back.
Okay, so this slide's just highlighting the fire protection emergency access. Routes in blue, we've run turning movements for the north Andover emergency response equipment, equipment. Both along the perimeter, heading in and out through the campus entry and the new reconfigured driveway. Access routes maintain a minimum of 20 feet per the fire code. These are fully sprinklered buildings, fire alarm systems, so the access roads do, ensuring they fall within 250 feet of every building point, as well as within 50 feet of at least one entry. The project does include a couple new fire hydrants on the new water system. Those will be located within 100 feet of the building-fire department connections as well. So the primary circulation is around the reconfigured drive, does allow for a portion of a pull-in in towards the pedestrian plaza as well, for additional access.
Does this analysis for emergency access take into account the large number of cars on the campus that might be required to exit during the same time period in an emergency? In an acute emergency, you're trying to get people off, fire access on, so do your calculations take that into account?
No, we haven't run passing parked vehicles, our assumption is when the fire trucks come in that they're getting out of the way.
Is there any way for people to get out of the way if they are urgently trying to get off the campus for legitimate reasons?
Jeff, can you go back to the, can you all go back to the beginning, because I think when you look at the map, that'll answer Peter's question quicker.
Thank you.
Go back one more. Yep, this one, so, I'm gonna answer that, this is one of my questions, so if you see where the words Flaherty Way are,
Yep.
that is currently the road that people will drive in off Andover Street,
Right.
come into Flaherty and follow the road where Jean's mouse is.
Right.
So in the event that a situation occurs where the fire truck is blocking that road, what we will do is cap the traffic, drive them in front of Austin Hall the other way up Flaherty Way, so they can still get out onto Andover, and that doesn't preclude us from using the 114 Turnpike exit or the 125 exit on the other side of the campus.
Thank you.
Yep.
And are you done with the emergency access, or do you have more?
Done, but happy to...
So, this is a little off-topic, but the word emergency cued the question. When you're building large student housing like this in this region, what provisions do you put in for student shelter for tornadoes?
Can I ask, in this day and age, do you, this might go for either Jeff, I guess, do you do anything for shelter-in-place type of things when you're building either dorms or academic buildings these days? God, I hate to even have to ask that question, but here we are.
So there are two different emergencies, right? One is the one where we're talking about a hurricane, tornado, or things like that. I'll let the architects and everyone answer that, but I think of most of the housing that we've recently built, which is stick-built construction, I'm gonna argue that these would be a heck of a lot safer from a, just a sheer steel construction program, but I'll let the architects answer that. Unfortunately, yes, when it comes to the idea of lockdowns when we actually have a severe situation, god forbid, an active shooter, or things like that, we actually practice those. As a matter of fact, Merrimack's campus is used by law enforcement in the Merrimack Valley and with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so during our spring break, we give part of the campus over. They come in and do trainings on the campus specifically. So that all law enforcement agencies in the area, god forbid they had to come to the campus, would be able to practice on classrooms, dorms, office spaces, open spaces, things of that nature. And then, all students go through one of these programs, we have a rave program, so if something were to happen on the campus, everyone who's got a phone in that area would immediately be told to shelter in place. We practice those on at least a once-in-time basis, then you do the typical fire drills and things like that.
Excellent, available to do that, thank you.
So Jeff, just a follow-up question, so in the event you have, that students have to evacuate the building, is there a muster point that's established somewhere?
The answer to that question is yes, the hardest part is whether they actually choose to do that. I will have to admit that for most students, if it's the middle of the night, and the fire alarm goes off, they're grabbing a pillow and they're heading to a friend's house or bed as quickly as they possibly can. But normally, they do try to just stay in one location, we haven't picked what that would be here. But I would imagine, when you get to landscape further on, you'll see that what I call the U on building one, that's a probably a good location to do it. If it was really cold or whatever, we'd probably open up the church and put them in there.
Got it.
So can you comment on any provisions for tornado shelter?
So, Tom Lassie, Q3 in the architects and project executives, so I think the building code here doesn't require us specifically to design for tornadoes, hurricanes, we're not in a hurricane zone, so we're not... the building code doesn't have any implications for having to design towards that. We're not, you know, it's like, not like Miami-Dade County where they have hurricane zones, right? And we have to be impact resistant, we don't have those requirements here. So this building would be designed to the code requirements.
Okay, thanks.
Let's keep going. Alright, and similar on access, so each building does have its own, these are the utility yard locations, but dumpster enclosures for each building will be consolidated in those same spots. I just wanna include some images, we would intend to keep this consistent with the recent efforts on campus with solid fence screening and landscaping around the perimeter to ensure those are enclosed. And, you know, this is an interesting location where there's really no back door where these buildings are, so we wanna make sure that we're supplementing with some screening on all sides of it, because there's significant approaches on 114 and heading north from Andover, Andover Center. So just wanna make sure that we're really not kinda leaving a back door, but understanding necessity of loading access and waste removal for the buildings. And with that, I think I'm gonna...
So just a quick question on loading and waste removal. So, is there, is it off-site where snow will be stockpiled, like off this site? I'm just curious in terms of, like, making sure obviously the emergency access is clear and not blocked by a snow stockpile, like, is anticipation be off this site, I guess?
I would assume it's all on campus, cleared, if relocated if need to elsewhere on campus, but I don't, it's not off camp, okay, yeah.
Good evening, Eric Benarke again with VHB Landscape Architect. So I'm gonna go through two slides for you, which is obviously the site landscape plan, and then also the lighting layout plan as well. And just to start off the landscape plan, just to get you oriented again, north is up to the top left, campus down at the bottom right, the two white structures are the buildings, which have a nice framing effect to this gateway corridor that extends from the corner of Turnpike Street and Andover Street, right between the two buildings, and so that will be our main pedestrian corridor. Accentuated down at the corner of Turnpike Street, we'll have the relocated existing sign that you have out there now, along with the existing statue that's out in the middle of the open space will be situated at that corner as well, where the pitchfork kinda walkway is coming from a corner. Extending up into that corridor and framed by the two buildings will enhance that further with some additional plantings, a nice symmetrical design that leads you up that corridor. Again, as Jeff mentioned, ADA accessible, accentuated with some nice trees, lighting that will complement also the campus standards that you see out there now. And extending up into this courtyard plaza, of course, that you see the circular radial pattern, defined with some nice ornamental paving, that paving we'll be looking at a little bit more detail, but that most likely will be some type of scored colored concrete varying maybe with some accentuated brick bands. Additionally, there'll be some seating in there out on the perimeter, either benches or some type of natural stone like granite slabs, that's common throughout the campus. And again, some light bollards will also be accentuating the outer perimeter of that circle in addition to some of the campus standard light poles. You see some of the pink trees there, which throughout the plan are those more like ornamental native-type tree. I won't go into the details of its species unless you do would like to know. But again, the dark green circles represent more taller shade. In this particular situation up the corridor, more festiget-type trees, more upright to be able to allow us to really capitalize on that view corridor all the way up to the church, which we think will be a really nice addition to this design. And then, some of the existing trees that are out there, of course, we are gonna try and preserve some, which are the lighter green, larger circles that you see up to the, exactly up to the top portion along Turnpike. There's some sugar maples along Turnpike, there's some invasive Norway maples, but there are some nice ones out there. That particular tree right there is a Norway maple as well. Not particularly the nicest of trees, but it is a fairly large tree that we are gonna look to preserve as well, even with some of the utilities that would be locating on the site. As Jeff mentioned, with the utility areas and dumpster areas, we are gonna screen those with evergreen trees to be able to block those from the road, and additionally over at that dumpster as well. And then we'll have some lower understory plantings that you see at the north corners of the buildings and extending up into the main entrance of the buildings, will be some nice mixed deciduous evergreen shrubs. A mix between natives and some durable plants as well, but predominantly native plants. We've introduced some plants, perennials, that will just bring in another color range throughout the seasons that may not necessarily be native, but they're extremely durable. And then of course, some bike racks will accentuate the two main entrances into the buildings, along with some additional plantings in that location and some potential ornamental paving that's a character throughout the campus. And as mentioned, lighting will be speckled throughout, which we'll get into in a minute. There's also some security bollards at the drop-off area, Jeff may have mentioned, exactly. Just to provide that protection at the drop-off areas. And then again, as we mentioned, you know, predominantly this is lawn area, with just the exception of some drip irrigation we'll provide at the shrub planting beds, so you can see there's not a tremendous amount of shrub planting, so we're trying to really be sensitive to how much water is applied. But again, all these plants, once established, that drip irrigation pretty much can be just turned off eventually once things get established, so that'll be a nice water cost savings. As we transition into the lighting plan, just a quick highlight, again, the light fixture to the left you see on the screen here is the campus standard approximately 14 feet tall, which is LED dark sky compliant light. And again, we'll continue those right up through the corridor, the pedestrian corridor, and accentuating the ends of the circular plaza, but then around the actual radial portion of the plaza, and then the interior radial will have some of those light bollards that you see on the far right of this screen here, the picture. And then some additional light bollards speckled up towards as you get closer to the church, just to provide some safety protection to those pedestrian corridors that connect the two main building entrances. Again, all dark sky compliant fixtures. What's not shown on here, there'll be some additional lighting at the two main entrances, and additionally, all the entrances with some wall sconces that will just complement the architecture and provide that additional lighting. Just a note here as well, again, the campus lighting is also speckled throughout the Turnpike Street and also on Andover Street, so that lighting is already there, and will be there throughout the project and accentuating that, those edges as well. And I'll pass it off to the Tom and Brian to go further into the architecture. Unless there's a question, sure.
Just so, just on the trees, it's great that you're preserving some of the existing canopy. I'm curious, I can't, you know, in terms of scale, it's hard for me to tell how close some of these new trees that you're intending to plant would be to the sidewalk, but I'd love to see that they would be providing that public benefit of, you know, a little bit of canopy cover, a little bit of shade for pedestrians, to make that a little bit less inhospitable. I'm not sure in terms of scale, or if you've considered, thought about that at all?
No, absolutely, we want this to be a very comfortable space, I think that's very, very important for us. So, we're trying to provide trees that don't overgrow the space over a long period of time, but provide that nice opportunity, as people walk up the corridor, it eventually, over time, as the trees grow up, they will extend over, over the walkway to a reasonable extent, but provide some shade as well, and especially where some of the seating around the radial situate some ornamental trees that'll get about 30 feet tall, will have a nice horizontal branching pattern to them, so people can actually sit underneath those and enjoy that shade as well. So that is important to create a comfortable space.
I'm curious in particular about the shading of the sidewalk along Turnpike Street and Andover Street, the public sidewalk.
Yeah, so there, we do have, what we're gonna do is introduce, or continue, because those trees along Turnpike Street, the three in a row are sugar maples. Two of them are younger, one's much larger, the third one to the right. But then we also have some Norway maples and some sugar maples along Andover Street. Some of those will be removed, but we are gonna replace those with sugar maples in kind. So those trees will get fairly large over time and be able to provide some nice shade that the current ones do, and be able to fill out, because sugar maples do be fairly large. And of course, the Norway maple over to the left corner of building one is a fairly large tree as well. So, there'll be some shading there. We can try and shift trees a little bit further away from the buildings as well, some of our proposed trees to also provide, you know, make sure they do get out over that walkway.
And then you mentioned bike racks, I'm not sure in terms of the consideration of how bikes flow throughout the actual campus area, if you have designated areas for bikes, if students are expected to walk their bikes through campus, and then I'm somewhat interested in just your anecdotal, you know, understanding of how much students are utilizing bikes to get off of campus to other locations, especially just with the intersection there, which is pretty challenging for pedestrians and bikes.
Yeah, so what we'll do is, well, right now, we're locating bike facilities at the two main entrances where we feel they'll certainly be used and be effective. We will talk with the campus further as we go down the design process, to see if it makes sense to locate additional ones. But we're also gonna talk about just what the existing conditions are on the campus, to see if there is an overload in certain areas and how we feel about what should be applied here. But right at this point, you know, we're locating them where we feel it's gonna be necessary, and then take a little bit closer look to see if there's anything that's necessary beyond that.
Is there current, oh yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, if I could tack on to Eric.
Sorry, I think another important thing to highlight is in regards to the 114 corridor improvements, which are establishing a shared-use path along the campus side of Route 114. So, what we do wanna be cognizant of, they're making some great improvements as part of that project, as well as at the intersection for creating, you know, bike accommodations which don't really exist now. So what we wanna make sure we're doing is providing them with a connection point into kinda this gateway for the campus.
That's awesome, I wasn't aware of the plans for a shared-use path. I'm interested to hear, maybe not from you now, but more about sort of how extensive that is. And then, just to quickly clarify, pin down, on campus, it's... And then just to quickly clarify, pin down, on campus itself, you don't have any designated kind of bike areas, it's just to provide the place for students to put their bikes when they then ultimately leave campus on bike.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
So I would say that, I would say I wouldn't consider this campus to be highly bike user friendly, and I don't mean that the campus itself isn't, I just think that there isn't a significant amount of usage with students. I think there's a lot of walking. We do have some bike areas in what I call the back on the Andover side, but I don't think this is a campus where you'll see, you know, bike racks in front of every single building. I think there are, there's like, in society, there's a group of students that live and die by their bike, and there's a whole bunch of other folks that don't really pay attention to it one way or another. I will say, we'll get to this a little bit later when we get to the parking. One of the reasons we don't have much concern about the parking here is because we do run a fairly significant shuttle system. There's one loop that happens on the campus. The shuttle never leaves the campus, and then there's another one where it actually goes around, it goes out to the engineering buildings on 510, 530, which is how we were reducing the risk of parking and traffic issues on that end. And then we take students all the way down to the train station and to some of the areas for restaurants and businesses and things like that to get them off the campus. So I don't, I don't, I wouldn't classify us as a, one of the campuses that's like exclusively like bike riders.
Any other questions for me? All right, Tom and Brian.
Good evening. Brian O'Connor from Q3, right across the tracks over there in Lawrence. Do you mind going back to the site plan for one second? We're just going to spend a moment talking about architecture, one more plan back if you don't mind. This project is really about placemaking, and what we're spending a lot of time doing is not only thinking really carefully about how these buildings sit on the site, but how these buildings intersect with the rest of the campus, support the mission for both the residents and the public spaces that are within these buildings. And so what we're going to do is look at a series of images very quickly to give you a sense of how this is going to look and present itself. But I do think it's important to look at the site plan and think about what we're trying to accomplish here. You know, one is, as was mentioned, really create this gateway and the strong entry corridor from the northern edge of campus. Allow buildings to really start to frame and protect some of these very private inner spaces, allow view corridors into the campus, and really create a sense that the architecture here is extending the campus in a way that's meaningful to the students and the community. Sorry, thank you. I just want to, I think it's important to hear some of that while you're looking at the site plan. So this is a quick view from that northern gateway, and what we're looking at here is we're looking down the view corridor towards the church in the middle. And the idea here was really to create building form that responds to this notion of gateway, but doesn't close the campus off. And so what we have is effectively buildings that are not identical on either side, but sort of mirror in form and a little bit in function, and create these sort of glassy corners that are populated by student lounges at each floor, so they'll stay illuminated at night, and really create this 24-hour sense of gateway and entry into campus. You'll also notice internal to the image, there are these taller towers, and these are sort of the glass towers that are the stair towers, creating vertical circulation within the buildings. Those are designed to create that sort of next layer of visibility down this corridor. So you have the gateway at the end, you have these flanking towers, and then you have this sort of sense of the church in the background, which becomes the most prominent element in this gateway. The buildings themselves are designed with a slightly darker material on the outer edges, and then a much warmer textured material that wraps around the corners and defines the pedestrian core and these interior spaces. The ground level of these buildings, as you can see, are highly glassy and transparent, including, as Tom will carry on here in a moment, with academic spaces and spaces that are central to the mission of the campus, not just the residence. And I think the idea here is to really create and frame this overall campus experience from the northern edge. The next image is actually an aerial view taken from slightly up and across, and here you can start to see how these buildings intersect with the public space that we were talking about, that, you know, large central area in the middle that becomes a spillout for the academic spaces, really bisected by this corridor, which you can see sort of cleanly cutting straight through the site back to the church. Here you can see the ends of the buildings are just slightly chamfered or slightly sculpted, allowing that warmer material to kind of wrap around those corners, capturing these glassy corners and exposing some of what's going on inside the campus to the outer edges.
So I have a quick question. Was there no mechanicals on the?
There will be mechanical equipment on the roof.
So you showed us this nice picture here with no mechanicals on it. Why did you do that?
Well, if you go back, you're never going to see the mechanicals. The way the mechanicals work on these...
Yeah, I know, but you're showing a, an overview picture with, and how will you not see the mechanicals?
If you were up here, you would see the mechanicals. There's no place on the ground anywhere around this campus where you would be able to see the mechanicals.
How high do the mechanicals go?
They're quite small. I don't know what the, they're probably about three feet high, and they're not at the edges of the building. They move and gather towards the center. We've done buildings like this all over the country.
I'm sure you have, but what I'm objecting to is you're showing us pictures of a roof that's not the way it's going to be.
Understood. We're certainly happy to update that for you.
Yeah, well.
What we can do...
And by the way, I think also this picture here is disingenuous too, because it's, that is not exactly what you're going to see. I think you've created such a proportion that's not exact with the view of the church. I don't think you'll be able to see the church fully from that whole area.
With respect, this is actually a three-dimensional model that was built with the church standing in place. You know, the trees may not be 100% accurate, the view corridor, the perspective, none of that has been altered. So this is actually a three-dimensional model. The rendering is extrapolated from that. This is not artistic license in terms of what you're going to see.
What would be super helpful, because this is, the setting is at dusk, I mean, it'd be interesting to see what this looks like at night.
Absolutely.
Especially from the other side of 114.
We have a couple more views, and we're happy to shoot night shots, we're happy to shoot day shots, more than happy. What we'll do is we'll model the mechanical equipment and put it back into all these renderings exactly as it is, so that you can understand what you'd be able to see. I understand your comment, there's no intent to hide anything here. So we'll model all that equipment and put it on the roof, so you can see at what point you would be able to see it as you elevate up into the air.
Is this the extent of the roof mounted solar panels, or do you anticipate that that amount of coverage could change?
I think it could change. I think we haven't, you know, sort of landed on the final analysis with that.
And I think, you know, the solar panels aren't necessarily going to be there day one, this building will be solar ready, but I think the...
Unless Jeff wants to commit now, but...
So just so we're clear, so the solar panels are something that I wanted to have in, I wanted to make sure that this body knew that we want solar panels on that building. So whether there is, it's going to be exactly that way, or it's going to be a little bit bigger, it's going to be on the other wing, I don't think we've decided that, but we felt it was incredibly important, based on just the sheer size of these buildings, that we take advantage of a flat roof and a building that can be designed that way, because quite honestly, there aren't that many options like that on the campus. So we wanted to take full advantage of the site.
Can you remind me, roof mounted solar, there would be no... By right, right, no other permits needed, okay. Yep, good.
Okay, I think we have a couple more quick views here. This is a view from the opposite side of Route 114, looking back at the campus. The gateway that we've been looking at is off to the right. The building design here, again, the sort of exterior skin of this building is a little bit darker, and what we've done is sort of where the edge cuts and is sculpted on the far right-hand side, you can see that warmer material wrapping around. We also have a fairly large cut in the middle of the building where the, there's a slight angle that cuts in as well. And the idea here is to really visually break this building down from 114, and again, allow a little bit of that warmer material that's to the inside of the campus to start to be visible in the inside of that corner. Again, you can see the sort of emphasis on the larger glass areas at the ground floor, and then the ends of the building, both of those sides are that warmer sort of wood tone material.
What is the material?
We're actually still working on the material. Right now, the anticipation is that it would be a fiber cement panel that has sort of a wood tone look to it.
So that, while we're talking about the material, it's a good time to work this in, read a comment that we received. First time I remember ever receiving a comment from the International Masonry Institute, but it's a public comment, so it's public comment, it's a public hearing, and we'll take it for what it's worth. Good morning throughout the greater Boston area. I represent the International Masonry Institute. We are a nonprofit organization that advocates for the masonry and tile industries, as well as the proper installation of such. I have two main concerns with the current building proposal and renderings presented at the college. One, for the most part, these four-story new buildings would block the existing church building and also some of the other existing masonry buildings that are a key part of the campus. There's only one narrow angle from a corner on the street where one could still see the church building. More importantly, the materiality of these two pending buildings does not complement the existing architecture of the campus. Roughly 90% of the campus buildings are brick, and that is a key part of the vibe and theme of the college. The two proposed buildings look like they may have clapboards and some metal paneling they would seem to stick out amongst the rest of the campus. These building designs may belong elsewhere in the town, but not on the Merrimack College campus. I would advocate for building architecture that works better with the existing college environment, and that would certainly include, surprisingly, that's my own, sorry, that's my own comment, include more brick and masonry. I'm not sure that that's what we can consider in our limited site plan review, but...
But I think actually, I thought that articulated the very first comment that came to me when I saw this, I said, this looks like it's in Kendall Square or the Seaport, it doesn't look like it's in North Andover, it's completely alien to every other building on campus. I mean, it's really a shock to me. I mean, I thought it would be end up like something more like Assembly Square, which tends to have a lot of brick, and, but this is, this is completely different. I mean, it's actually a shock to me, to tell you the truth.
Can I pose a question to the architects? It does, or Jeff, if you want to, but I'd love to hear the architect's view. The term I would use is abrupt, in terms of what we are accustomed to seeing from the style of architect on the campus, which we can see from off-campus, and it just seems like it's an abrupt departure. So I appreciate all your comments about, you know, the wedge here on 125 to interrupt the otherwise large blank facade. I appreciate your comments about, you know, the sculpting on the ends of the building where there's that entry experience, and that's not what I'm asking about. I really do appreciate that. But sort of on top of all of that is what does seem like a very abrupt departure from the style of architecture. Architecturally, what are you trying to do? First of all, do you think it is abrupt, or are we mischaracterizing it? Is it in some way like the college architecture? And if not, what are you trying to accomplish with that?
I'm happy to answer it. But before he does, I just want to set, because he'll give the architect's answer to that, which I'm assuming will be, sure, it's in alignment. The college felt very strongly that this should not simply be another brick wall on the length of 114, which extends beyond 114 and will go onto our campus and goes across the street as well to the two office park buildings. We wanted a departure, we directed the architect to come up with a way that we felt made sense. Obviously, we wouldn't put it forward if we felt that that wasn't the case, but before he gives the technical answer to your question, I just want to make sure that we're clear. From our perspective, this was something we were seeking, it wasn't something that the architects came to us and said, hey, by the way, this is what we're thinking, what do you think? We wanted to break away from more brick.
Were you trying to break towards a particular style?
I'll, I think our direction was more like just, we would like to see what it looks like without brick. I'll let him go beyond that, but again, from our perspective, we wanted to see something that was a departure, especially because it just starts to blend in with everything, right? I mean, you can, even in this picture, you can see if that ended up all being brick with the church and Austin Hall behind it, it just sort of all comes together, it just feels like one big brick forest, and that wasn't what we were looking for. I'll let the architect answer, be on that.
So do you mind going back to the corner view for a second? All right, so yeah, this view is fine. So we actually looked at this pretty hard, and I think we had very clear direction that sort of brick is not what we're looking for. And when we look to design buildings, we don't just design them like they could go anywhere. This is a really like thoughtful response to what we're trying to do on the campus. It is overtly more modern and more contemporary than some of the buildings on campus. It's very deliberately not brick, because if you were to look at this view, and everything in this view was brick, then the brick church, which is actually quite vibrant and quite strong as a reed, would disappear, and you would sort of lose that focus. So what we're trying to do is create a very strong gateway building that looks to the future of where Merrimack College is going, not trying to replicate something that's in the past. And so what we're trying to do is create very clean, strong forms that accomplish the mission, which is gateway, which is entry, which is more sort of pronounced glass areas, visibility at the ground level into the activity, most of which doesn't happen with brick buildings. And so what we're really trying to do here is find an evolutionary new language. And if you actually really look at the Merrimack campus and walk around, you'll see the library, not brick. You'll see some of the newer housing on the backside, not brick. You'll see some of the new administration buildings or college buildings right behind the church itself on the back edge of campus on the North Andover line, quite modern and really not rooted in historical brick. So I would argue that we're thinking about this building not being brick as a deliberate way to break up the brick that is in this immediate area. You have the Science Building, you have the church, you have Austin Hall on the other side of the street. The whole edge of the campus becomes a little bit of a blur if we do go to brick.
So you know, I appreciate that perspective of brick or not brick, and I think you've articulated it well, so that I can understand it. And in particular, I like your reference to the library. I've used that library when I was in high school. I don't know if I was supposed to do that when I was in high school, but I did.
We'll speak about that afterwards.
Yeah, yeah. And even at that age, it was very apparent that that building was different.
Right.
And what I'm trying to express here is that was different in a way that seemed to fit. It was not brick. It did stand out, but it seemed to be somehow synergistic in ways that I can't articulate, but I'll bet you could as an architect. This does not strike me the same way, and I don't think it's just because, you know, hey, here's a guy who, you know, remembers a library back in the day, and this is new, and this is a change, and they don't like any change. Yeah, I don't think it's that. I think I give myself a little more credit than that.
Yeah, I would too, I certainly...
But this, this is not striking me the same way, that it's complementary different, like the library, I think was. This is kind of abruptly different, instead of complementary different. I take your point, not all brick, and in fact, Merrimack has a history of not all brick. So in that respect, this is nothing new. But how would you react to, at least my observation, that it's not brick, but not in a complementary way like the library was?
Great, great comments. I'm going to take them in two parts. I think the library is an internal building to the campus. It's very much in the center of a lot of other things, it has a completely different mission. This building, very, or this series of buildings, very deliberately wants to elicit a little bit more of abruptness to it. It wants to, we're trying to create a gateway to the campus on the north side of campus. We want you to drive to that intersection and see a gateway, not see something that feels like it just blends into the background. So there is a little bit, I would never use the word abrupt, I'm trying to like be responsive... like, be responsive to your comments.
I know.
But I do think there is a very deliberate attempt to create a frame for the church that respects this view corridor and it does require a little bit more sort of in-your-face attitude maybe than you would see in the, in the library or some of the other buildings on campus.
I think it's a great response. This will be my last comment, because I know the chairman's
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back.
His clock on me is running out, so my last comment is this. My last comment is this, that I think you've also articulated well that the library's more in, you know, internal, this is outward facing. But the question I would leave you with is outward facing to where? To North Andover? To Andover? Because we ain't that. And to John's comment, if it was Seaport, I would totally agree with your approach. But this is outwardly facing to a place that will elicit words of people seeing it other than gateway.
I...
I think it's a great design in a certain location.
So, this sort of goes back to some of the conversations we had at Royal Crest and I recognize that there are differences of opinions about the types and styles of buildings in an area that we consider an entryway or gateway to North Andover. So, we've had that discussion a lot at this board and there are various different opinions. I like it. I like that it's different. But hold on, hold on. My point is going to be that our opinion of this, for the purpose of this bylaw, does not matter. We can talk about it and if you guys want to have, I think it's a really interesting, frankly, it's a really interesting conversation to listen to. I really like Peter's and your, what was your name?
Brian.
Brian, I really like the conversation. I find it very fascinating. But our bylaw that we just enacted does not allow for us to, for this to be considered. If you look at the bylaw, and I'm reading it now, the bulk of structures...
Keep going on that one though, Aton, after the first comma. So, the relationship to existing buildings and other community assets in the area.
But I, that's as to the bulk of the structure, not the way, not the building material, not its look.
No, it is.
No, it's not. Look, read it.
It absolutely is.
Relationship...
And I mean, it's, it's a question of, it's the specific application that we have in front of us, but it's the broader context. I think Peter stated it pretty well. This is not just the entryway to this campus. This is the entryway to North Andover.
It doesn't matter.
And, it does matter. It matters a lot.
No, no, it, I'm not saying it doesn't matter in the sense of what philosophically. I'm saying the bylaw does not allow for it.
Well, I, I think it does, but there's also a broader context to it, is when we did Royal Crest, we spent an enormous amount of time on design. And one of the things we said is we wanted something that was fitting with North Andover.
No, although, well, let's, let's not say, well, let's not say we.
And New England.
Let's not say we, we did, there was disagreement about that, yes.
We, we, didn't we end up with something that you could argue, which several of us argued it was too dense? And that's, and that's what the community decided.
Yeah.
But the architecture of the place was very much traditional New England with very few exceptions to it.
And I think our comments...
It's completely, and that's my point. And, and if you look at the Merrimack Dorm that was proposed as part of that project, it was much more of a traditional building. So, my point is that there's a shift. I, I think there's an intensity of view in the town that we'd like things to be a certain way with a certain look and feel. We're not opposed to the future, but this is inconsistent with that. That's the message.
So, so, I understand that. I don't personally agree that this, about that, but that's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm saying that I don't think the bylaw allows us to look at, I mean, and some, people read it and get back to me if you disagree, but I, I think the limited site plan does not allow for us to talk. It's, it's about height. It's about, so height, density, setbacks, physical lighting, that's what Dover's about. I don't, I think the whole purpose of Dover is that we are not supposed to get into the specifics of what it looks like and how it impact, and how the viewing of it is the town. I honestly think that that's outside of our purview. We can have the discussion, I'm just putting it out as a warning.
No, I disagree, but that's, yeah.
Tell me where in the bylaw says we can do it.
Well, if you put it in front of me, I'll look at it.
It's right here.
Okay.
Well, let's get, we can get back to it. I'm just saying, I, we can go down this road, but I'm saying that if it ultimately gets to a vote and that's the issue, I, I don't think it's, I think we're on not safe legal grounds. So, I just want to be out with that. We can have the discussion, but I, I ask people to look at that. I don't know if we need guidance there, but I'm reading the bylaw and that that's not necessarily an appropriate consideration for us. And, and, and that's, I disagree with, with, I like the conversation, I don't, I think it's okay, but I'm just, my point was more as to what we're allowed unlimited site plan, which is new for us and different than regular site plan review. And even on site plan review, this is, no, I was gonna say it's different than downtown, it's different than, so, but I get what you're saying. We did have this whole conversation about Royal Crest, but I thought when we were creating new zoning for Royal Crest, that it was appropriate to have that conversation. I'm not sure that this bylaw allows for it, that's all.
So, since I said I already made my last comment, I'm going to ask permission of the chair to make another comment.
Permission granted.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
First, I appreciate that discussion and I think we should have another look at it, not this moment, to see what collectively we think it, it allows. Second, I, I think it's important for Merrimack and all of the vast number of people you've brought here working on the project to have the benefit of our feedback, no matter what. Because if after the fact, the college gets a wave of awfulness in reaction, you could legitimately ask, "Well, we, we never heard any of that from the planning board." Well, you're hearing it. And it's a mixed view. Some like it, some don't. I think we owe you that perspective. And when we did this with Royal Crest, the architecture changed and, right?
Yeah.
And, and those were tough discussions and it did not fail because of the architecture. It failed for other reasons, which we also had discussions about and which, in my view, they were not able to listen to.
So, there was a, for many people in the room watching at home who might not have experienced Royal Crest the way that I did and the way that you all did. I was struck by a conversation that happened at the board. We were all witness to it. There were a bunch of neighbors that had come in and were very concerned, as you may recall, that the Royal Crest project was, was a Trojan horse, that in, in effect, what it was, was an ability for the institution to get one building in and so that it could get the rest of the buildings in the future. And I got up and explained this whole conversation about how that was silly. If that was the case, I would have just bought the whole property and then we would have Dovered the whole thing. And then there was, there was a really great conversation actually between the chair, Mr. Simons, about Dover, which is not slightly different now because of the bylaw change. But what I really appreciated about that conversation was there was an agreement, not on the specifics about Dover, but that there were protections that any institution would have. But what the board always appreciated was that we would, that we had historically, and I think we're doing today, is always come in with the fullest of presentation, not just simply just say, "Here are the three slides you get because Dover only allows that." That we always come in and do that and part of that is because we do want to hear what people's thoughts are. We may not agree with everything. The board may not agree with it itself, but I just want to be clear, you know, there are other institutions and other towns that have similar processes and they literally are, there you go, drop it off and go. And, and this group that you have just said is assembled here because we do want to go through an extensive process where we do actually collect, collect thoughts. And as I had said, this was not one that we just sort of went at lightly and I appreciate the commentary. But I just wanted to set the stage for that because I know once we start going in different directions about Dover and things like that, I don't want people to feel like in any way the institution is just saying, "We only have to do the bare minimum in terms of, of public process." I think we're going well above that and appreciate the commentary. So, I appreciate you giving me that, that opportunity to open that door.
Part of what animates my view here, just part of it, which I guess is the old guy part, is, you know, the history of this, if, if I understand it correctly, is, you know, the end of World War II and the GI Bill. And in this community, and I, I know this because of my dad coming back from war in the South Pacific and many of his contemporaries, this kind of institution was really important. And it, it has a certain, I think, responsibility to the future to respect that past. And then when you add to it, when you add to that the religious aspects of the college, which I can't represent, but when you add those two factors, it seems to me that that's a real responsibility on how do you balance honoring this incredible past with aspirations for the future? And that's why I really appreciated from Brian, the comparison with the library. And, and I just don't have the architectural vocabulary to express why I think this, but I think the architects would understand this. That did it. It respected that past somehow and projected the future. And I'm really struggling with this the same way. And I, I know you keep saying it's a gateway with the view corridor to the church, you know. Again, I can't speak to that as an expert, but it just seems to diminish it.
Well, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But as often the case, we will come to a point, I, I would just say, and I brought back up that, this because there is one dynamic that I just don't want anyone to lose track of.
Yeah.
And that is, it is our also responsibility to make sure there is an institution in the future.
Right.
And part of that responsibility is to make sure that we're attractive to this generation and future generations. And while I appreciate everything that you've said about the history of Merrimack and we hold that dear to our hearts, the reality is, is that as we get further away from that, there are certain traditions that go beyond the brick and mortar, right? And that is why for us, what we've tried to do is maintain certain aspects of the campus that doesn't always translate to literal brick, but does translate to things like height and, and experience of coming in and coming out. And so, I just want to point out that of the buildings that we have done in the last 12 years that I've been a part of, and I'll look, Gene, if you could do the, along Rockridge Road, that section right there, none of that existed before President Hoppe and I came through the door and none of those are in brick. The three that are on the bottom are gray, the gray roofs, those are all metal panel with some masonry in it. And all the, the two in front of that, that's all stick construction. You can't see it below, but the, underneath the word Andover, which would be hidden obviously to the, to the street, but along the dotted line of North Andover, Andover, those are all buildings that are all wood, stick construction and are green, so...
But Jeff, for me, it's not brick or not brick. I'm totally fine with...
No, no, I, I understand the point.
No, no, I'm totally fine with it not being brick.
Yep.
And I'm trying to express inartfully that although I have no allegiance to brick, as evidenced by other structures such as the library and other ones...
Yep. No, I get it.
This just doesn't seem to be reaching that level.
All right. Thank you.
So, go ahead, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so, maybe, maybe to kind of walk into a little bit more what's, I guess, what's covered by limited site plan review. So, I, I think my biggest concern, and I, and we've got to maybe figure out how to way to measure it, is that, so, as I mentioned, on 114, you have a very long building and with a lot of windows. And when the sun sets, it's going to be a pretty bright building, right? Which across the street, you have a bunch of residences, right? So, I'm just curious to how we can represent in terms of lumens or foot candles or something where we can represent what this building's going to look like at night? Because that's probably to be, I would, I would argue, a lot of the concern from across the street, right? Because there's nothing there right now, right? So...
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We're certainly happy to do nighttime renderings that are as accurate as possible. The challenge becomes, every night is different, you know, with moonlight and light. So, it's, it's going to be quite challenging, but we'll, we'll certainly take a pass at it. Recognizing that fact, we did make a very deliberate attempt to use a darker color along the street edge here on the outer edges with the goal of sort of reducing the glow of the building skin itself. There are a lot of windows. We obviously don't have a lot of control over whether the lights are on or off internal, but we're, we're certainly happy to do nighttime renderings. It's no issue at all.
Got it. And is that common areas in the first floor that's not used? I mean, these, and maybe even the dorm rooms, are they on like motion sensors, like if there's occupancy in the room?
I, I certainly think they would be. I mean, we, we can talk through that in detail. I think the idea is to make sure that the building, when it's occupied and when it's being used, the ground floor sort of showcase that activity level, which we think is a really nice thing, that most of the buildings on campus don't, don't really do right now. And, and so, you know, this building is doing something that's, that's quite different, but I understand your nighttime concerns, certainly happy to address that.
So, I guess the one big question, and we haven't addressed it explicitly yet, is the height of the buildings.
So, Tom's going to jump into that.
So, it's, you're 48 feet and the zoning is 35, correct?
Yep. So, we're, as you know, as Jeff mentioned, we're going in front of zoning board next week. So, and I'll touch briefly, so, these, these are based on average grade and I'll get to that in a minute. And both buildings are substantially similar in, in scale, so they're both four-story. The reason, obviously, is more bed count so that we have students on campus to, and keep, bring more students on campus.
So, what you're saying is you're adding an extra floor, like you would have to go three floors, right?
Yeah.
Give or take, in order to be compliant with zoning. So, the reason why you're going to four is because you need more density when that...
Yeah, that's a big factor. I think another factor is without the fourth story, we would have no amenity space and no academic spaces. So, you know, with amenity space, it allows students to gather, it allows, you know, the campus to interact with the building.
Or you have future, or future dorm rooms, right? I mean, six of one, half does the other.
You could.
You would lose a floor, so you would have less density. So, I, I guess one of my questions is, why didn't you extend the buildings in Andover and add length that way to keep it at three stories or go further up 114?
Yeah, I think, I think sprawling across the campus more kind of does a disservice to...
Yeah, so, there's a couple of things really quick. So, one, one of the issues here, if we can jump back to the site plan for a minute, I want to, I want to answer your question. We're, we're working pretty hard, that's perfect, to really create sort of a figure-ground relationship here that allows the buildings to have academic and amenity space that supports the broader campus and brings students from across the campus to here. So, that necessitates some ground floor programming that does, in fact, drive the units up, as you say. I think the other thing we're trying to do is make sure to minimize or balance the amount of sprawl of the footprint versus the ability to create green spaces and public spaces that are hardscape, that, that feel like reasonable gathering areas. So, if you, if you see on the site plan, going further sort of south into Andover is not, not really, there's no room in that direction. We're running into the sort of campus entry area over there. And if we were to go further along Route 114, we start to get towards the academic buildings and eat into other parking areas and we can certainly talk about that. But I think we also don't want to create a, a sort of uninterrupted street wall along 114.
So, these are, will be the tallest buildings on campus?
No.
They're actually...
Which are taller?
Very much, we'll, sorry, we'll get to that in a minute. We have a slide for that.
Let's jump right to it so we can answer your question.
So, I think, a couple more, this, one more.
One more after this.
So, we'll start from the corner, across the street, across Andover Street, those, both those buildings are about 45 or 50 feet and those are the office, the brick office buildings.
So, it's not part of the campus?
No, it's adjacent. Moving to the church...
And it's in a different zoning district, correct?
Yes.
So, the, the zoning is allowed in the other district?
Correct.
But not allowed in this one?
Correct.
Okay.
Moving to the church, the church is about 48 feet. Is that to the spire or the...
The spire.
Yeah.
How about the, the roof itself?
I'll double check that. I, I would have thought that'd be to the, the crown of the roof, but we'll, we'll confirm that.
And then, moving to Austin Hall, that's 50 feet, four stories. Sullivan Hall, four stories, 50 feet. Paul Massano Hall, three stories, 46 feet. Rogers is 41 feet. O'Reilly Hall, four levels, 45 feet. Crowe Hall, three levels, 46 feet. So, there's, there's, most of the buildings that are on the, the north Andover side are, are actually above... are actually above, are, are over the zoning, and they're about substantial to the 47 or so few feet of these new buildings.
But none of them are as close to the edge of the property line as these.
Well, Sullivan would be the closest to the edge of the property line. And one of the things we do look at, which may or may not be of concern to you, but we do look at the overall corridor a little bit. So, you know, we do know that across Andover Street, those are not on campus. However, they do from, you know, Route 114, create a sort of edge condition to the entire road. And so we do look to context.
So how close is Sullivan to the edge of the property line versus these?
Sullivan is probably about.
Probably about a hundred, a hundred feet maybe.
Hundred feet or so.
And these are 35?
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Tom, I don't know if you want to jump back to the, the other plan. One, one more back if you don't mind.
Yeah, so this is just average zoning, or I'm sorry, average grade calculation and how we, how we calculate that. So as Jeff mentioned earlier, the, the site does slope from the right towards, towards the left and the kind of yellowy gold area, and that's, that's at 228. So that's, we'll have grade, you know, and there's a, so there's a four-foot split per building across, so each building's split about in the middle. So again, 228, that will split to the blue, which is 224. And as you can see, both buildings are similar height or at the same level so that entrances are equal. And then the courtyard kind of there braces or embraces that kind of entry area. And then the green is down at 220. So both, you know, this allows us to have all the building entrances at accessible levels at grade, so we don't have to have like a tear lift or anything at those doors.
And then I think the next slide was just a quick adjacent district, which, you know, I understand you, you guys are not interested in necessarily, but we did sort of.
Just because, just because one board member is not interested, not necessarily, I wouldn't even say not interested. You're going to get tough questions here, but.
Absolutely, yeah.
It may be, it may be really important to some members, it may be not important to some, so just continue.
Yep. This was really just setting the table, that we do recognize the height limit in this zone is 35. And then in the next slide, we were trying to communicate that although that is one of the reasons we were looking for relief, in the next slide, you, you were able to see sort of all of the other buildings in North Andover on campus that are taller than what's being proposed. And we did sort of start to look a little bit beyond the edges of the campus. If you can jump to the next slide, I think we covered this one.
Yep. And then the last slide, sustainability. So as we all know, the energy code's changed recently this year, so this building will meet the, the new stretch code, whether that means Teddy, hers, or Passive House, we're still deciding what the, the compliance pathway is, but it will comply. As I mentioned earlier, the building will be solar PV ready, so that's, all the infrastructure will be there. The roof will be structurally sound to hold roof-mounted solar panels. So if the college does choose to add solar panels, all they have to do is purchase the panels and have them installed and flip the switch. All the infrastructure's there for it. Low-flow plumbing fixtures will be provided. We'll do light-colored paving where applicable to reduce the heat island effect. Interior and exterior lighting will be all efficient LEDs. And as Eric mentioned, all the exterior will be dark sky compliant. And as Eric mentioned before, native plantings in the planar beds, so those will have drip irrigation to try to limit the reduced, or limit the amount of water. And then, as Jeff mentioned, bicycle accommodations across the site, so, and then eventual connection to the 114 improvements, which is several years away, but we're still thinking about that now. And then, as other Jeff mentioned, the enhancement of the, the campus shuttle access. So there'll be a stop here provided and to make sure that, or to encourage the students to, to take shuttle instead of drive.
You're just, you're looking to meet the baseline stretch code. You're not looking to go beyond that in any way, lead certification?
Not at this time.
With Matt, have you engaged with Mass Save? And are you looking at like a path one or two?
I, I think we're, we're a little early for the Mass Save, and we're still determining which type of systems that we're going to be going with that are either gas-powered or electric-powered. So, and, and as you may know, Passive House really encourages electric power, so those are still being evaluated with, with the, the building, the budget, and, and what we have for compliance paths.
I would just encourage you to engage with Mass Save earlier rather than later.
Absolutely.
I think they always say, if you're 25% designed, it's too late. You should have approached them earlier. And I'm guessing you don't have any kind of target UI at this time either, or?
I don't think so.
To circle back up.
Just, you know, more, just interested in the sustainability elements, I'm not sure that we have a whole lot of influence on that. And I just really quickly wanted to go back to the piece about height. I just wanted to really quickly touch on, like, the need for, for housing and for beds. Do you know what the split is for on and off-campus students?
So this is going to be a little bit convoluted. If you're new on the committee, everything I answer is always a little convoluted.
So before you answer, Jeff, just as part of that question, I, I see where this may be going, hey, three stories versus four stories, right? Because we've had that discussion a lot over the last five years. So why are you looking for four stories rather, because I know you've thought about this? Why are you looking for four rather than three? What's the benefit and the drive behind that?
Sure.
As part of?
Yeah, so, so let, I'm going to cover a variety of different answers, and I'm going to try to do it all at once, right? Merrimack houses about 70 to 75% of all of its students. Nearly 600 of the 2,600 students that are housed, and I'm using round numbers, are in master leases at Royal Crest right now. There is probably another 200 students or so. We never really know. It's one of the oddities of Royal Crest. If a family goes out, parents rent a unit, they're protected, they don't, Royal Crest isn't telling me whether there are students or not living there, right? So let's say there's 800 students living at Royal Crest, right? I've tried everything I possibly could to figure out a better way of keeping them all there and a better housing system process. Consolidating them, moving them, keeping them all in one building, moving them to one side of the property, knocking down the property and building a dorm. I believe, I don't want to be quoted on this, but I believe that the housing project that when we were considering it over there is actually taller than this, right? I know we're talking about that area, and I just want to remind people that, that the biggest complaint about that location was not just that it was so compact, right? But it was also that it was too tall. So that's a reality. There's a whole conversation that's going on at the first half of this meeting, or first portion of this meeting, which is about groundwater and not taking up more space and making it three stories and spreading it out only adds more problems to that, not less. So we're running out of options here, right? Staying at Royal Crest, as I had said from this podium 100 times, was not a long-term option. This was roughly the project that we were going to do before Royal Crest came up as an idea, and we stopped it cold because we were convinced by a lot of folks, and the school was and the board was, including by me, that doing something at Royal Crest would help that financially build, build a big economic development project. That didn't happen, that's fine, I'm not relitigating that. But in that, in that process, I came back to the, to the board and did say, if that doesn't happen, this has to happen. And this is 540 beds. This does not even take every student out of Royal Crest. The only way to do that would be to go higher. And that's where we actually said, that's not a conversation we're going to have, right? We could have gone in and been like, oh no, it should be five stories, let's get everyone out of Royal Crest, leave Royal Crest to go handle their own problem, let them go deal with the 200 empty units now and go deal with all of that and the public policy of that. But we felt based on the height of Austin Hall and some other buildings that this was the appropriate number, and then we just worked backwards. And so I would just say, so that we don't end up confused, if we lop off the top floor of this and we lose however many beds that is, 100 or so, the following is absolutely true. The project will not go forward. It just will not go forward. There is no financially viable process by which a project of 300 beds on that location or anywhere else will go forward. So we need that size, number one.
And just to be clear, your real, this project is really to meet the needs of those students that are currently at Royal Crest. It's not necessarily preparing for expansion. It's really trying to deal with this issue.
So I would just, I, I'm never going to stand here and say Merrimack, which from 2012 to 2022, or 11 to 21, was like the ninth fastest master comprehensive growth in the country, is not going to continue to grow, right? I don't want anyone to assume if I said, no, I don't think it's going to be growth, that somehow that comes back to haunt any of us, right? But our number one goal here is to move as many students out of the process of Royal Crest as we possibly can. Because if for no other reason, that that was what we modeled through the entire process, and so when we come on the other end of Royal Crest, and I said, the next housing project, if not at Royal Crest, a vote against Royal Crest is a vote for that corner, right? A vote against Royal Crest is, I got to move these students out because it's too expensive, right? Since, since that did not pass, rates have been increased at that place by 15 and 18%, right? It's not financially viable to stay there anymore. So I, I know that, that the finances of the institution are not the, the responsibility of the planning board to put all that together, but I can't stress enough, this is not an isolated project. This is actually a continuum of a much longer conversation that's taken place. And so from our standpoint, yes, I will tell you that we would love to have had more students on that site, but we didn't feel going any higher than what we're already going made any sense. And we don't want to, didn't want to push it any further than we needed to. So back to your very first question about between, I would say, we'll just use a round number, 72% are on the campus, or in our housing. But 600 of the beds in that 2,600 are at Royal Crest and is a master lease, right? I would imagine that there will still be some students there, right? What that looks like, I don't know. But it's a shift.
So just to get, because you're using as a percentage and then a, a hard number, what about percentage are students living on campus not at Royal Crest?
So I'm going to use round numbers again. Let's just say there's 2,000 students that live on the campus, and there are 600 that live across the street. All right? But Royal Crest was a significant piece, and, and it grows every year. And one of the points that I continually made is, is that one of the reasons it's grown at the size that it has is in part because we headed down, it's not the town's fault, but we headed down a path of trying to make sure we had enough students to move into a large facility, Royal Crest should it be built, because it was the only one to make those economics work. So now I'm trying to get them out.
Jeff, just clarification on one of the things I thought you, I heard you say. Under this current proposal, it's 540?
Mm-hmm.
So if that's an equal number for the four floors, three quarters of that, or three floors would be 405. But I thought I heard you say, three floors, 300 beds is simply not possible, but how would you get to 300?
Yeah, so, so let's work backwards again. So the building, I'm going to use round numbers here. See the N in North Andover on the, the map of the line between Andover and North Andover?
Yeah.
All right, so that's our nursing center. That's roughly, I think, 18,000 square feet. So let's just call that for sake of argument a 9,000 square foot floor plate. If I take out all the amenities that are on the first floor of that building and bring them down, I'm going to have to remove, I'm going to have to build that somewhere else. So I'm back to the stretch question that you've been raised, right? But I'm, we're not doing that because I still will need that. So the question really will be to, to, to John's point, Mr. Simon's point is, is, okay, you have a choice if you could either lose the housing or you could lose the first floor. In either case, I can't afford to lose one or the other. Can't financially, can't space-wise, can't do any of that stuff. And so from our perspective, again, I go back to the conversation I had with this committee, and by no means is it was policy, but I said, there has to be height on that corner if we can't do it at Royal Crest. And I think the, the, I will call it indication, I won't call it fact, I won't call it anything other than the statement that I got back was, if we're going to have height, I'd rather see it there than on the 114 along Royal Crest and along the back end of all the Berkeley residents, which I understood, and that was what was voted on.
What I'm trying to ask is, I thought I heard you say that if it was three stories instead of four, you'd be reduced to just 300 units. And I don't understand, the only I don't understand is how you went from 540 to 300, because at least in my mind, if it's true that the 540 is among the four floors.
Right.
Then.
You're, you're, you're right, I'm using a round number, so you know the actual.
Having an equal number, having an equal number per, per four floors would leave you with 405 for three floors.
Yeah.
Rather than 300. And that's my only question.
Yeah.
How did you get, even with round numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
Why 300 instead of 400 for three floors?
I, I might, I might have gone too fast, so I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to correct myself. These two gentlemen are literally calculating.
Well, look, I'll, I'll help you out.
Yeah.
It might be because it's not an equal distribution on all four floors, that the first floor has non-residential uses.
Yes, that's correct.
So would three floors be 300 or is it the 400?
Good.
I, I think the, the, most of the, the first floor of, of Building 2 is, are all of it is amenity and academic spaces.
That helps to explain it.
So that one's, yep, and then half of Building 1 is amenity or more than half.
So maybe three floors would be halfway between 300 and 400?
So I, yeah, I think, I think Building 1 has about 100 units per, you know, the, the main floor plan, 100 or 100 beds, sorry. And then Building 2 has about 56. So I think it's about 324 beds if you remove a floor.
Okay, thank you.
Total. That was closer than I give myself credit for.
Yes, you did well.
I have a, a little bit different kind of question is, if you will, I realize it's one lot, but if you were to take what is logically the lot size for the new buildings, and I think there was one slide that showed all the green area, you know, what would be the acreage of the parcel directly associated with these buildings? Because I think you could pretty much, you know, you know, I think you could pretty much do it based on one of the slides that we saw before, but I'm just trying to get some idea of, of that, yeah. It's this one, yeah. So if you take the amount of land, that's basically the green there, how, how big is that? Is that two acres? I'm just trying to get some idea of the relative size.
I'm going to check. I want to say that's about five acres.
The water shit.
Yeah, yeah, the water shit's about eight and change, and this is, it should be about, I want to say about five acres.
I'm, I'm just, it's just a frame of reference thing that I'm trying to understand. I'm trying to figure out what the floor area ratio is.
I know. So we had the, it was like 2.4, right Jeff?
So yeah, that, that area hatched, or yeah, if you don't mind going back, to the, one of the drainage figures that has the.
But isn't the provided acreage here the minimum lot area? You said was that green area, right?
But, but that's the, that includes the, the rest of the campus parcels in North Andover. You're talking kind of.
I'm just trying to get a frame of reference here, yeah, basically of that, is it? You know, if it's around five acres, I'm sort of okay, but I'm just trying to get pretty close.
Yeah, that, that pink area is, is about eight and a half, so for, for excluding the, the church, five, I'd say about five acres.
Okay. So, all right, so anything else in the presentation?
Uh, uh, yes. It's not the answer I was looking for. Couple, couple more.
I only have one slide. Again, Matt Keely from VHB. What you're seeing on the chart there was provided in the narrative memo as part of the site plan package. And what it's showing is an overall summary of a campus-wide parking study that was done back in 2019. You see on the top there with the yellow line, at the time of the study, there were 1,881 parking spaces available on the campus. And all the bars you're seeing on the chart from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM are the, the occupied spaces that were observed as part of the study. So our peak demand that we observed was at 12:30 in the, the middle of the day, and that was 1,614 spaces. So we had a surplus of 267 spaces empty at the time that, with the peak was observed. So with the 43 spaces that are being eliminated as part of the project, we don't anticipate there being an, an issue with parking supply on campus. I just wanted to. I just wanted to note that this is just on-campus parking, there are off-campus lots that are served by the Warrior Shuttle, and there's, as the slide notes, there's additional parking of 426 spaces. So, those are pretty much the numbers, cut and dried, so that's why we don't think there's going to be really an issue with parking supply.
The year of the study again?
2019.
2019?
So, like, when you calculate the total number of spaces, are you counting any spare areas that are not paved?
We were counting every car that was parked on-site.
No, no, how do you get to the 1,881?
Oh, that's, I mean, there's, those are just all the spaces that are used on-site. Some of them are maybe not striped, or are they, or are there some...
They're all striped. Hold on, I'll answer that, because I want to make sure that we're accurate, as always. They're the striped number, right? So, where there is a space and it is striped, that is, that gets to that number. The reason I'm distinguishing that is because you asked about paved, and there is a section on the Andover side of the campus, which is gravel, and it is striped, and it is part of that number.
Okay, well, yeah, that's what I was going at.
Yes, that's what I assumed you were, so I wanted to make sure that I was accurate.
I just wasn't sure.
Yep.
So, you've done that during the day, how about, I guess, two questions I would have, is, one, what about events? I mean, you know, I told you I'd go to the hockey games, and you can never, if you don't get there early, you can't get a space.
Yes.
So, is there a problem, like, or is it just you have to go further to park?
It's a further question. So, I will use, there'll be people watching from home who cringe when I'm about ready to say this, right? So, we're going to have homecoming this weekend, right? And you're going to drive by on 114, and you're going to see the grass with a lot of cars on it.
Yeah.
Right? And, and the reality of that is, is because we're actually taking spaces away elsewhere on the campus, because we're doubling up spaces for, oh my God, it's late into the night, tailgating, that was the word I was using, I was looking for, right? So, so the reason you're seeing more cars up front is because we're absorbing one and a half to two spaces per car in the back, right, for tents and things like that. So, so, yes, there is no question that when you come onto the campus for a major event, commencement and things like that, we've utilized lots in a different way that pushes it up front.
It's a handful of times a year, I mean, that's life is.
Yeah.
I guess my other question is, if you're adding this many beds on campus, and you're taking a lot of those away from people who are probably at Royal Crest today, many, if not most, who have cars, wouldn't it add?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. So, my understanding is for every unit that we rent over there, we get a space. Right? So, but the reality is, is that upperclassmen are what's over there. And many of them who don't have a space, for whatever reason, are actually still parking overnight on the campus, or they're parking in our off-campus supply in Andover, at Andover Landing. So, just because they're living at Royal Crest doesn't necessarily mean that they're parking at Royal Crest. They could be on the campus, there are several of them that prefer that, right? And then there are many who are like, "I'll just take the cheapest route I possibly can," and that's our parking in Andover. And they just get on a shuttle and they go to that location.
But is it likely that if you build these dorms with this many rooms, you're going to have more people that are going to want to, it's going to increase the demand for parking?
I will not stand here and say that it won't increase demand. The real question is, is how much demand will it increase? And I think the way that we would judge that is the following. The buildings here are primarily going to be serving freshmen and sophomores. Unless there is some medical reason why they need a car, we don't give them overnight parking. Right? So, so that's number one. So, now the question is, are we growing the freshman class so much that we're filling 340 beds? The answer to that question is no. What we're doing is maneuvering them so that the upper-class students are now staying more on campus. So, I think your real question would be, if I can sit in your seat, is, okay, so this building may not add more, but when you're done shifting everything around, are you going to end up with more space needs? And my answer to that question is, is that those are all overnight spaces, we only have so many of them on the campus, and every time we need to elevate that, we find more off the campus. And that's why we built the shuttle system that we do, because I can't take more on-campus spaces away from day usage, whether it's for faculty or staff, myself, you who come to a hockey game, right? We only have so many in there in the back, and so it's growing as the offsite.
Could you put any context, so given this is 2019, and your enrollment does go up every year?
Yes, it does.
And, so if you could provide some context as what you've done to at least maintain this delta by adding...
It's offsite.
Where you've added it, what year you've added it, or something that can bridge...
We can do that, because we didn't have 426 parking offsite then.
That's what I would imagine. So, I think it would be helpful to have some type of bridge from 2019 to now.
Absolutely.
That shows how you've managed the situation.
Yeah, that's no trouble at all.
Is that it?
In due interest of time, I'm going to speed, because I can see there's 11 more slides here. And we've done enough. So, this is the shuttle. I've said it multiple times, we have one, we have one that stays on the campus, we have one that goes around off the campus. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but I think we've covered that topic.
Only one thing, is that with all your new, all the solar panels, you should think about making this electric, if it's not...
Sounds good. Next. Okay, so this comes up, because it's near and dear to my heart as much as anybody else's. There was a question at the last meeting where someone requested, "When the Route 114 project happens, what will be the impact in terms of the proximity from these buildings to the street?" And the statement that I gave was, I believe that it would actually, the distance would grow, not shrink. Here is the, the result of that conversation. What's actually happening is, is that the green way along the sidewalk actually grows slightly as you continue down 114. And obviously continues to grow a little bit more as you go down further.
Will there be any kind of, very quickly, consideration of integrating that into your like, walking network with, on the campus when that's installed, when that's, project's finished?
So, so, I don't believe the sidewalk is moving, right?
It's widening towards the road.
Right? It's widening towards the road, but we're not moving it. And so, that, and that sets offside our site. We, we help pay for that, but it's not on our, it's not ours.
And the connection pointed to it will just be this one gateway kind of entry point? There's no other sort of...
There will be a couple other spa locations heading towards where the Hawk Signal Crossing is now. Part of that, part of the upgrades there will include connections, new connections to the campus, as well as the right-in, right-out at Walsh Way. So, there are a couple intervals further down.
I'm just imagining as, you know, where crossing areas are changing and pedestrian amenities are changing, there might be some, you might want to direct students in different...
The project, when the sidewalk was put in, was a joint partnership between the college, the town, and the state. And the goal was to connect the business district where Toast is, all the way to the business district where Burton's is. And what was missing was a sidewalk from that corner, the length of the front of the campus, and then at Royal Crest, the rest of the way to Toast. Right? And so, the project was to make sure that it wasn't just a crosswalk on the street between the college and Royal Crest, but there was a fighting chance that anyone could literally walk from Royal Crest and get to Burton's, any of the doctor's offices, or anything like that, this way, and people could get to the business district on that side. And that will be continued and enhanced as a result of the 114 project, where part of that is a Butters', but that's a state project.
So, just one quick, just question. So, the 32 feet from the, from the line going on, existing versus improvements? I'm assuming that, and I know this is a little bit of a moving target, but the MassDOT project, like, I mean, that's the existing, in other words, the property line's not moving as a function of...
Correct. Yes, that is right.
Okay.
So, I'm going to work in resident comment number three here. This is from one of your students, Brandon Kellen-Vokas.
God bless him.
Just going to read. "Good afternoon, Ms. Enright. Thank you for speaking with me today regarding my concerns and hopes for the Merrimack College property. As the following information I would like to be added into the record with the planning board members, I would like to request that a full site traffic study be looked into. There used to be three in entrances and two egress points to the college, there is now only one entrance and two exits. If traveling along Route 125 and 114 isn't already hard enough, there are many people who are turning to use Hillside Road, Summer Street, and other cut-through neighborhood streets to access a school. I believe that the planning board should require the property owner to conduct the traffic studies, I feel that traffic is getting worse and the amount of entrance and egress points throughout campus keeps decreasing. Additionally, I'm not sure if MassDOT District Four would be responsible, but I believe there should be do-not-enter signage if they want, don't want people accessing the school via Route 114 entrance. I do think my request to the planning board is unique, and as, it might be, seem rare to bring up a property that's obviously already been approved years ago, the entire Merrimack College project. However, since many of these, those documents, I would assume, are from 1947, wouldn't it make sense to update them? The school has grown, and as I'm sure you are aware, MassDOT District Four is already looking to start a project along 114 to improve the roadway in the coming years. Thank you for your consideration of my concern, and I would love to hear if there's any type of answer that your board could provide to any of my questions. Thanks you in advance."
Context, if I could, just for a minute. What he is mentioning about entrances onto the campus is, before COVID, you could, in fact, drive on 114 heading towards Middleton, and you could take a right and drive onto the campus. You could come up 125 and enter into Alcott Village and come in through the back, right? You could do all of those things. The reality is, is, once COVID hit, we had to control how many people came onto the campus. And what we found post-COVID was, it wasn't just that we had more understanding of who was coming on and off as related to COVID, but it really became a deterrent to keep a whole bunch of folks that we don't really want on the campus if we just limit the number of entrances. And so, the entrance on Elm Street has become the predominant one, people have to come on and either show an ID to come in and whatnot, or they've got to have some reason to be there, so it's a good deterrent. The student who I appreciate getting engaged in the public process, I don't really think he's going up 125, and to get on the campus is going to, what was the streets, he said?
Hillside.
Hillside. I think for those of us that know the town, Hillside is actually heading up Middleton and then taking a left as if you're going to the Commons eventually, and Milk Street, and area like that. So, I would just say, for the context, if you're a student and you feel like you used to drive into one entrance and you can't do that anymore, I think that's what he's trying to get you to engage in.
Well, I would say, in terms of traffic, I don't think we've heard anything that traffic would increase, right?
Right.
Based on, I mean, it doesn't really make sense that there would be increased traffic by time of the particular project.
And that, that's why I say, from, I respect any student, actually, I wish more students would get involved, although I wish this to be more positive, but at the end of the day, what he's really trying to get at is, is, can the, can the planning board engage in a process by which the institution would reconsider its gate access and safety policy?
Consider yourselves on notice. Okay. All right.
Keep going.
Keep going.
You can read all of that, Stormwater peer review underway, department reviews are underway, MassDOT have access point for local approvals, keep going. I'm confident they will ask questions as we go. All right, so I think that's, the rest are just floor plans and things like that that we included in the package for your information. You can go up, Gene, quickly, if anyone has any questions. These are just...
So, what are we going to hear at the next meeting?
For the next meeting, I want to respond to the questions that had come up about Stormwater. Gene, if you can go all the way back to the, what I call the yellow map. While it's not exactly part of this process, I think it's not unreasonable for, for us all, including me, to get back to the refresher course of where water is coming from and where water is going. And so, we will start with this map, and we will follow the green lines on the right, and we will head down. And by that point, we'll, I'll have some better understanding from Andover about where it all goes and how it all works. And I originally said in this podium that it was an agreement. I was wrong. It's actually an order of conditions by Andover, which is where it places all of that paperwork, which I think for this body gives a good indication of where I think this will all land. But at the end of the day, you can clearly see that the yellow has enormous amount of non-campus acreage on it, and all of that water, when it goes somewhere, goes onto our campus. And the reason that we invested in the detention basin process was because it would run right by us and get right to the neighborhood in Andover. And we just, we were standing in the way of it, and so that's why we worked with Andover and built it. And we will go through that in enormous number of slides so that everyone can feel confident that that has been well discussed and answer any questions that we may have. That's number one. Number two is, Jeff has kept a list of questions that have come up from the board that we're certainly want to cover, and I defer to the chair and the board as to anything else you want to cover. We go before zoning on the 10th, I assume that's a multi-meeting, and then we're just deciding how many times you want to come back with us, and answer more questions, more public comments. I will have had all three community meetings with the Butters by the 17th, so I'll certainly want to provide some update from that.
Well, I certainly don't, I mean, we can see how many means, I certainly don't think we can vote on anything until you've been finalized with zoning, because we can't approve some things here.
Right.
Certainly doesn't meet with zoning, even if we wanted to. Okay, is there any members of the public that have patiently waited, they want to say anything at this time? Nope. You've waited, you've earned the right.
So, just want to say thank you, Justin Descoli, I'm a resident of Andover, want to say thank you to the board, thank you for Jeff, too, because he's also been responsive to my neighbor Dave, who's been asking questions. There is a meeting on Thursday, so, and I will be at that meeting, we're the ones who brought that attention. So, we're trying to understand, one, who owns this culvert, that the water ultimately drains to. And I just want to bring to everyone's attention, so hopefully, I don't know that there's going to be any resolution after Thursday's meeting, but, but it's being discussed, and I don't really have any other comments to make, it's tired, we're late here, but I just want to say thank you, everyone, for actually giving it the attention it deserves.
You're more than welcome to come back, or if you want to send us an email about, you know, we talked, nothing was resolved, and here's what's happening, we're more than help, don't necessarily have to sit through two hours to tell us that, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's actually informational, I've learned a lot. I mean, these drainage maps are interesting.
Okay.
You know, it's always just interesting that it doesn't show anything else on the other side, where it actually all ends up, and that's, that's the important part. And we talked about 100-year storms today, those storms happened twice in two weeks. So, you know, with climate change and everything that's happening, and as your engineers, we have to think about how we design differently. So, anyway, that's all, I just want to say thank you, and I'll be, we'll let you know.
And so, what, I would just say, I'd like, I think this was a very helpful discussion, and I think, especially some of the discussion about the look and appearances, I think those are good in the sense that if we can all come, if people can come to things that there's more consensus, all the better, that's great. But I would just ask people to look at the bylaw again, just so we're clear as to ultimately what we're voting on, because I do think there is a difference between when we're at Royal Crest and we're creating a new bylaw and really more part of the process versus voting on a, a, something under the Dover bylaw. I think the height is definitely something, if you look at number one, relationship to the bulk of structures and adequacy of open spaces, to the natural landscape, existing buildings and other community assets, I think that's why we heard about the comparison between what they're proposing and what the heights are now, and what the heights are on campus and off campus, because I think that hits number one. But I, I'm a little more hesitant as to some of the other stuff, it doesn't mean we can't talk about it and try to come to something that people either like better or don't like better, but I just have some hesitancy about how far we can stray.
What do you think about a site visit?
A site visit? Um, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I'm for it.
You guys, yeah? Jeff, what do you think?
No, I'm dead set against it. No, anyone's welcome to the campus, and as a matter of fact, some people will be on the campus regardless, so...
So, but, but we can, we can come and see the campus, but when we do a site, but, I don't know. We did, we did, so, but are you tired after staking out the building?
Well, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, is, I mean, you could, you could do it two ways, is, you, you could stake it out and just let us come and see it, or we could stake it out, come sometime, you know, we could even run a balloon up. I mean, you know, we, we could do either a skinny version of it, or kind of a more complex version of it.
I'm happy to work with Gene and figure out the best course of action, I mean...
Members want a site visit?
I'd love to see it staked out with balloons.
Okay, um, I mean, I think the last one we did was at the, no, 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 for a site visit at Merrimack was by the, was it the stadium?
Yep, for the lighting.
For the lighting, right?
Oh, remember the lighting, yeah.
Yeah.
But it wasn't their lighting, it was the Recplex lighting, they were the example for us to go look at.
That's right. That one's still, nevermind, um, okay.
So, preference, weekend, weeknight, like?
Well, I think, I think a night would be good, because I think to Sean's point, we could actually see from across the street what you look at right now in terms of back and forth, what the lighting is right now. I, I would say a weeknight, because I think weekends are gonna be a little more crowded on campus for the most part, but...
Well, I'd, I'd like to be able to see the stakes, so, does it have to be dark when we go?
Um, no, as well, but it, I mean, the problem is, it's gonna be anytime after four o'clock, unless you wanted to do like a weekend afternoon, but...
Well, but I mean, like, if we did it over the next two weeks at five o'clock, we'd be okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just, whatever you guys decide, just work, just let me know, Gene, just let me know what you wanna do.
We just have to notice it as a meeting, so if we have a sense along. Why don't we, we can like kind of pick maybe a potential time? How about, I don't know, Wednesday, the eleventh, at four-thirty or five?
Hold on, please bear with me.
Probably later would be better for me. Or like five, or five-thirty.
Alright, here, so, you know, let's not do it now, so here's what we're gonna do, we wanna do, we wanna do it in the next two weeks. Everybody, please send Gene dates and times that you're available over the next two weeks. Gene, you can tabulate them and see what hits the most people.
Was there not consensus, five-thirty on the eleventh?
No.
No?
I, my only complication with the eleventh is that's what I'm meeting with the Berkeley residents.
Okay, and you have zoning on the tenth, so, okay.
So...
I'll send an email.
Send an email, send one to Jeff, too, so they can, you know, I mean, I also wanna give them enough time to do it, right?
Yeah.
So, even two or three weeks, but, okay.
Alright.
Okay, so we are going to continue this until October seventeen. Here at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna table the rest of the discussion items, 'cause tired to talk about them. We'll do the meeting minutes at the next meeting, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.